Good evening and welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for Thursday, May 27th, 2021. Time is now 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, this is a remote meeting also. We have Pine, Sand &amp; Stone Company, application for an earth removal special permit, Water Resource Protection Overlay District. They've requested a continuance to June 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Any other motion to continue?
So moved.
So moved. Ernie?
Second.
Second by Mike. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Next item is 7:00 PM, public hearing continued. McIntyre Loom Inc.
Video and sound have to be turned on. I just noticed it's our, our video and our sound. Here we go.
Application for an earth removal special permit, 478 Northeast Main Street. We have some updates. Would you like to?
Absolutely.
Forward, name and address?
John Palmer, Lieutenant of the applicant, McIntyre Loom.
Thomas McIntyre, also from McIntyre Loom and the landowner, KTKT LLC.
Can we ask for a couple revisions, couple clarifications?
Yep.
From last time, if you want to just go over those?
Sure. We provided a list of requested waivers on a separate sheet as requested. We put together the bond amount pursuant to DOT regulations as we pressed at the last meeting. I might be missing one, but I think did that.
And the waiver for the 100 foot.
And the wa- yeah, we have the letter from the abutter.
Yep.
Waiver for the whole, that's right.
And the abutters list.
The abutters list was not on our.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, I believe that was what was requested. We wanted to talk about the waivers a little bit.
And the bond.
Right there in the bond.
Sure.
I'll start with the bond. As you probably know, there's currently an earth removal bond on the site relating to activity in this area, which previously covered the proposed area. This green area, the study store, it really covers this area. We'd like to just amend that bond. We think it would be a smoother process to amend that bond to just to cover the new, newly disturbed area as opposed to issue a whole brand-new bond, so.
What's the existing bond amount?
$100,000 and 890, $100,890.
Okay. So you're looking to amend it to 205?
No, keep it the same amount, but just have it.
Is the other area restored already?
So from, uh, from this line, this way has been restored. That bond, what originally issued, covered the whole area.
Okay.
So from here, this way has been restored. It's now same amount, just covering this area.
Okay. And we were keeping all the material on-site anyway?
Correct.
Correct.
So like to add this, this new three-and-a-half acre site to just come on that bond in some sort of recognition, let me restore a significant portion.
You have grass grown in there and everything?
Yep. From, uh, just this section right here, uh, which is currently undergrowth, has not been accepted by the town. Everything in this area has been. That actually falls, you know, is not, is not being covered by that bond.
Yeah, that's been released by the board. At one of our meetings last year, Bill was appointed his agent to decide when that was restored or not. He signed off on that, except for what John just said.
What was the amount one more time?
$100,000 and $890. So $100,890.
890.
Okay.
Materials are already there, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Yeah. And as mentioned the last one, this hill was previously restored initially.
Yep.
We're gonna scrape off the topsoil that's on there so that it can be replaced once it's flat.
So you just did the spreading of the topsoil?
Well, in that, in the proposed area?
Yeah.
Um, back in '05 when we took over, the, the whole place was open. There's nothing in there.
That is, that is grassed.
So spread topsoil for this $30 a cubic yard?
For what we proposed.
Yeah. That's just the labor to spread it.
That's just the labor.
No material.
No, the material's staying. We're leaving everything.
What if it doesn't stay?
Oh, it will 100% stay.
Okay, okay.
But is there any, does anything with black and white say that's gonna stay?
Uh, yeah, in our application.
Okay.
And it'll be a condition.
Yeah, leaking, okay.
So the, the material that is on that hill was approved by the town as suitable for use, but it's, uh, paint away from the mill.
Yeah.
It's with, uh, bio solids and the seed. I'm not gonna sell that.
Yeah.
It's gonna stay on that site and, um, I have no interest in getting involved in.
For the site that's closed, was there ever a request? Now, sometimes we used to have a NASB build as the done up?
Mm-hmm.
We, we provided, uh, when we were here, going for the restoration.
Yeah, that was the last year.
Roughly December 2019.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, it's fine.
So forward, we have to just recognize that if something happens and the, the loan disappears, we don't have a bond covering the material.
Is it part of the writing? You said it's in?
It's in the, it's in the application.
Okay. How, how long is it gonna take you guys to do the earth removal on application? What is it? How many acres was it?
It's three-and-a-half acres.
Three-and-a-half acres.
In, in the decision that was written.
Yeah.
Previous to this, it states three years. It's not going to stay three years.
Okay.
Not what we expected, but, um.
Twelve to 18 months?
Yes.
Okay. All right, just wanted to get on there. So that's not too bad.
Do you wanna run through the waivers?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring one more up. We'd like a waiver of the monthly status reports with daily truck counts and estimates. And the truck counts part is just, it's staying on-site. I mean, it might not even go into a truck to bring it elsewhere on the site. It might just be from the excavator or the loader. And it just, the daily compiling of that is just really an administrative burden that just seems unnecessary where it's all staying on-site. So we would request a waiver for that one, the monthly status reports, and given the short duration and small, uh, first, small acreage disturbed.
Can we do upon request from the board, the board's agent?
We would.
Or every, every two months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or every quarter?
I'd like a upon request from the board.
I mean, we could.
Or once a quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah, every three months.
Four times, yeah, four times a year.
Once a quarter?
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter?
Do we do it on a quarterly count of earth removed estimate? Or supposed to try to do it 90, 90 days every quarter?
Probably just upon request, and we'll just have a calendar running.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause if there's no activity.
Yeah.
Or if there is.
And then I'll get to the waivers. So 6.1.6, number three, uh, no excavation within 100 feet of an existing public way or adjacent line. As previously mentioned, the only abutting landowner within 100 feet has provided a letter assenting to the application. And so we request a waiver from that, from that requirement. Moving on to 6 point, I'm sorry. Oh, there wasn't a question.
Yeah.
And we got a 6.1.6, number six, which means no excavat-, uh, no excavation within 10 feet of the annual high water table. There is a well that's already on-site right here. And we just like a waiver to any further installation of wells. That well, I think we never even hit water.
So they.
We got 20 feet down and never hit water. So we think that that should be sufficient. It's, you know, just, just north of the disturbed area, and that area is a hill. So I don't think there's any realistic possibility that we will be within 10 feet of the water table considering we couldn't find it in the first instance. Did Bill witness that?
Bill witnessed.
Bill witnessed when that was dug?
This, this well is at the height of finished grade. It's already at the proposed finished grade height. So it, it goes 20 feet below.
20 feet below the finished grade?
It's never had.
We didn't even hear water.
No, 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 no.
It's in excess.
Fair enough.
And I, I couldn't tell if this required installation of wells or to the extent this requires installation of new wells, we request a waiver. Moving on, 6.1.68, any shelters or building erected on premises for use. We're not gonna erect any buildings in pursuant to this use. So we press a waiver from that one. And then finally, 6.1.610, 11, 12, and 13, which are public way ones. One, the material's staying on-site. We're just gonna push it elsewhere on-site, process it, and then it'll be sold as processed material in the ordinary course of our business. And two, even if it were to leave the site, our, our access into the site as a whole is to the town of Oxbridge. So I think it's a little bit outside the jurisdiction of the Douglas Board on the public ways. And those are the, there are a few other reasons in there. Happy to go through, but those are the principal reasons, I think, that a public way one should be waived. And then, uh, this isn't much a waiver, but there was one other thing on here, which was a proposed decision. Um, the hours didn't quite match up with our ordinary working hours, so we just request amendment to reach into those, which is gonna be seven to 4:30 on weekdays and seven to 1:00 on Saturdays.
Okay. What was, what was in there from, what, nine?
The proposed decision was on exactly the same on, uh, week, it was seven to four on weekdays, so we've added the end of the day hour. And it was eight to 12 on Saturdays, so we moved up an hour, moved back an hour. And in both instances, no equipment starting before 6:45 AM.
Do you have the section of the bylaw for the monthly status reports?
In the decision, it was under number nine.
I, I'd never seen that in the bylaw itself, so I don't know where that came from.
Oh, okay.
But in a proposed decision.
Yeah, I think we, we had that, you know, maybe similar to that.
I feel like I know that bylaw well, but I didn't see it in there, so.
Nine?
Is it in nine?
I thought, I was trying to figure out if we're gonna open it up.
So it's more of a amended condition instead of waiver request?
On the monthly reports?
Yeah.
So yeah, I, I'd request an amendment to quarterly and a cumulative amount as opposed to a daily lock amount.
Okay. Do you know where, which section that is?
In the section of the bylaw?
Yeah.
Or in this decision?
Oh, it is under O, under the decisions and conditions. I'll officially provide monthly status reports as requested to the planning board by the first day each month until the project is completed. The report shall include daily truck counts and daily estimates of the earth removed from the site. The supplemental shall include supporting documentation supporting the estimates of excavated material.
Okay, so the request for the condition, Ford, is that we're gonna do either quarterly status reports as requested.
Mm-hmm.
By the board and cumulative?
Cumulative material removed and no truck count, just because it's not gonna, we're not gonna put it in the trucks.
Correct.
Cause it's on-site.
Okay. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Ernie?
Questions?
Okay. You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah. I think the waivers are all within reason.
Yeah.
Go ahead, block.
You?
Ford, do we have any other questions or concerns? Anyone in the audience? Uh, Mike, did you have something?
Just to make sure that it's prevalent, that it's marked, that the topsoil is to stay on-site somewhere, somehow.
Add an additional, add additional, add an additional condition that the topsoil material stays on-site.
Mm-hmm.
That's a question?
Always should, yeah.
And there must be enough to cover the, the area of the earth?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, in theory, it should be more.
It should be more.
Okay.
Slow, taking down a slow dairy.
Yeah, no, just, just to make sure, you know. Otherwise, there could be a shovel full left there taking it out.
That, that's a good part, but yes.
I can add that under, I can add that under some such conditions.
I'm confused, so I have a question.
Yeah?
Did I hear you say all the material will remain on-site?
You mean the excavated material is?
Well, that's what I'm trying to clarify, cause you wouldn't need a permit if everything let it stay on-site.
Uh, that's, I feel like that's not the way the board has interpreted that in the past.
The topsoil, the topsoil is staying on-site.
The topsoil is staying on-site.
The gravel underneath is gonna be.
It's gonna stay on-site for processing, but then it's going to.
Never mind.
Retail.
I've always been under the, um, that this covers any, any excavation on the site, whether, wherever it goes.
But it's eventually going offsite.
It is.
Yes.
More than 300.
Yes.
And I'm okay with the bond, the way it's gonna pick up this other three acres.
To transfer it over.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially where we have the.
This has materials.
Good materials staying there, you know, but it's, uh, I can, I can roll with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Delivered the NASB only one.
I don't know how that can be done. Can it just be rolled over?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can, um, switch the phase or the section.
Yeah.
They'll give them a plan.
Yeah. As long as it's noted that it's changed to a different section.
My memory is we had a phase one, two, and three, maybe up to five on this thing. So whichever, I think phase two and, one and two are done.
So, yeah.
So we have phase six and, um.
Three, four, five.
However it was. There's a plan somewhere floating around the town hall with that, so.
As long as that's noted, that it's changing to the correct phases that you guys are doing, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns on this hearing? Okay. Ford, look at the list of we, a request of waivers for May 18th, 2021. Onto the motion.
May 18th or May 27th?
Says May 18th.
Yes, Dr. McCullough.
Oh, yeah, the list of, yeah.
Oh, there you're talking about.
There is, as mentioned, there's one more in there that was not, um, put on there by accident. I call, it's the building. We're not putting buildings, so I don't think it really.
Which is gonna be number, number eight?
Yeah.
Which section? Eight?
6.1.6, I think, number eight.
One, six, eight.
We're not putting a building.
It's not in, not in here. Those are waivers.
Okay.
For the 18.
Yeah.
Forgot to do it.
Yeah, buildings. Friendly amendment.
Right.
Onto the motion.
Yep.
Someone running?
Make the motion to close the public hearing?
Yep.
Well, well, we're gonna close it or we're gonna have it all written up before we do?
It's already written up.
Yeah.
And the applicant's seen it.
Okay, as amended? All right.
We just amended a few red lines.
The key red line, yeah, they read it.
We redlined on common.
They're gonna approve it with the amendment. All right.
Yeah.
And as long as, cause we've done it before, we've been burnt, that's why I'm just saying.
No, as, as long as the applicant's aware of it.
And they're gonna be in the minutes and it's gonna be.
Yep.
We're gonna abide.
Yep.
For it.
Yeah, they've reviewed it.
Okay.
Ernie made a motion to close the hearing.
Oh.
Seconded by Aaron. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, um.
Waivers.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the waivers as presented in the application.
With amendments, with amendments.
In amendments.
And the amendments as presented. The waivers, sorry, the waivers and the amendments as presented in the application.
I'll second.
Motion been made by Ernie, seconded by Jake. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto the motion to issue a permit?
I'll make an own motion to issue a permit for, uh, the address.
478 Northeast Main Street.
McIntyre.
478 Northeast Main.
Motion made by Les.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, me. All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, have a good one.
We have a, oh, fine, continue, that's what it was.
And then Ian will revise the body of it to reflect what we're talking about.
They messed me up.
Do you know if anybody's coming for the A&amp;Rs?
Not that I know of.
They don't.
They, everyone who is on the agenda has been given the agenda.
Okay.
I think you gotta have it here, right? Is that how it works?
If there's really no questions, um, Ian, if you wanna tell us about the A&amp;R plan for J&amp;T Sleepy Hollow LLC.
Do you have the mylar?
Yeah.
Do you have the mylar?
And the six copies.
And an original mylar.
Let me see if the, uh.
The check.
If you wanna grab both of them too. 53 Mumford Street.
If I can get into one of you, have these one.
I don't have a key.
Just ask Jimmy.
Yeah. If not, we'll have to just pass him or do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it is what it is.
So 53.
We can't, we can't do it.
Yeah.
Without the presence, right?
Yeah, correct. Well, 53 Mumford is in our packet here, let me see, with a plan.
Oh, we look forward to the planning board meeting on May 27th.
So it is 27?
Nobody's on?
I have six copies. Where is this one? Oh, this was the Allen one. Okay, it's actually here.
Yeah, the Allen one is.
No, both, both.
Both here.
Both here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's underneath the Allen, Allen in here.
Oh, underneath it?
Yeah, it's just, it's right here.
Is there somebody here?
Yeah, I got it here.
Okay, yeah.
Doesn't look like it. The engineer should be here, somebody should be here.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
Do you wanna look at the two ZBA applications?
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, let's, let's see what we're, cause we don't have any mylar, we don't have anything here.
Yeah.
Well, I'll pass her out some stuff to sign while we're waiting.
Do additional business or how do we have to take that by order?
Well, we can do the ZBAs first, just in case someone walks right in and cut in something else. What do we got?
Door is locked into the community development room. Nobody has a key.
So we can't do any community development?
About the A&amp;R plans?
We should make a request. You should be able to have a key to go into the office in the evening.
You can give me. Are we talking about the A&amp;R plans?
Yes.
The community development room?
Oh, oh, no, no.
Oh. Kind of just.
Are we talking about the A&amp;R plans?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't, gonna.
Since there's nobody here to present anything, right?
And we got nothing to sign, no anything. We got no mylar, no nothing.
Hello? Actually, I'm, I'm through Zoom. This is Zach Les, from existing rate.
What are you here for?
53 Mumford.
Okay.
A&amp;R for, uh, Mr. Bob Mochio.
Okay.
We have no, we have no prints here. We have no mylar. We have no nothing here.
Maria says she's gonna, I gave the mylar's to, to Mr. LeJoyne. She said she's gonna bring them over.
We have no keys, we have no keys to the office, so we can't get in.
Oh, that, that changes things, huh? If, um, if I was to print, how late you guys can be there? Cause I can print something and I can head over right now. I can tell you there about 10 minutes.
Yeah, they'll let you in.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna check to see if we can't get in the office, if they're in the office.
Yeah, just give us a few seconds, okay, Zachary?
Okay, yeah, they'll, they'll be on the line here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if they have specific office keys down there or not.
I think they do. I remember one time, and it's no star.
Why doesn't he have a key to the office?
I don't know.
I don't know. He's, he's running the planning board and he doesn't have a key to get in the office.
With Bob.
It's a joke.
Bob doesn't even have a key.
So.
Would Bob and Eric?
No.
Is he still here?
No.
I think the police, police department should have one.
They should have keys to everything, yeah.
Correct.
Who would like an application? There's one special permit variant.
I did one the last night.
I did too. Uh, we'll take it over here on this side.
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you.
Ernie, wanna take one of these?
Ernie hasn't had to do one in 11 years.
I'll, I'll let him pick which one he wants.
Bigelow or Huff?
Big, oh geez, those are two beauties, yeah.
Big fat packets.
I'm gonna pass these, check these, pass these while we know what's going on. I don't care, I'll take one.
I'll give you Bigelow, it's a little fatter than Huff.
What are we talking about? I don't have anything in my.
For what?
Package for A&amp;R, I mean, ZBA applications.
No, you never do.
Chair gets, gets passed.
You never do. She, the chair has it.
You have it now.
Okay, we can review it.
No, you don't.
Right, they hand it out. I just see if anyone has it, so.
Okay. We're already doing this, um, 280 something.
There we go. What is it? Access to society? I don't, like, the address brings a bell, but I don't, I don't know. We also don't have any minutes, try to plug back on it.
I don't think so, but, cause we only have that one that I was like, I didn't even go back and see.
Look at our previous agendas.
Sorry? No, no, take your time.
Let's see what was what.
Yep.
Where the money's going.
Yeah, I'm unsure.
Ooh.
Prove this works. So is, is Ian trying to get something on that A&amp;R?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I mean, it's, is obviously a, if they submitted for an A&amp;R, it is a timeline that we.
Yeah.
Oh, 100%.
It's not listed on here.
Yeah, right. We need that information.
Can I see, I just wanna see what Marie else put in your pocket?
Yeah.
Cause I don't know what she else forgot.
Oh, another person.
Sorry, bud.
You know what?
Oh, there it is, okay. She did include that.
You know, to, be fair, Maria's a little shorthanded. So.
I'll look at the Z.
Well, if that she brings like all the material into this room, the folders and stuff and like sets them up.
He might have forgot to make a second trip.
Or you're gonna make it in time.
Um, most likely a second trip, because they were already on agenda. No, it's a ZBA, sorry bud.
No, it's okay. Where was I?
Non-conforming.
Hi. Do you have the mylar also?
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
There's one. These two?
It was on our last agenda.
Okay.
Two eighty.
There you go, two more coming through.
Oh, this is, uh. They want to include a garage, special. Two hundred and eight, fifty-six, okay, I don't have the area. Frontage. Four foot from Jason.
Do you think Ian's looking for both of them or?
Most of the sign?
Yeah, two more.
Okay. All right, so let me look at this. Yeah, these aren't. You got lost the hook. No, meaning, these are.
Lot to them?
Big lot to them. See what's going on. See this, uh, subposition plan? Okay.
They're going to make some calls. They don't have keys themselves, but they're gonna see if somebody up here.
Okay.
Mark Allen's here. He's got his plans with him. Great. So we have some time.
He's saying he could be here in ten minutes.
And I would like to request keys for Ian at least and myself.
State of that must happen.
Must happen.
Otherwise, having these meetings are mute subjects.
Is it?
We can't get into the room.
Okay, do you want to either application? You want to tell us?
Yeah, I'm good with Huff Road.
Yep.
So they're seeking a variance and a special permit. The existing structure seems like it's outside the property line. And they're proposing a new structure to fit in the property line with a, they're looking for a six-foot sideline and a fifteen on the other side.
What's required, twenty-five?
Yeah, it's, it's, the lot's completely non-conforming for the size, but they do have. You know, it's a non-conforming lot, you know, so they're a two-bedroom cottage, they're going to be still a two-bedroom house. They're just putting the house more on the, in the property lines. She looks like she's on the, on the outside.
Yeah.
Existing, so a little over the line.
House is zoned.
Um, it's RA zoned in that area, but it's, um, this abuts the Manchog Pond, so it's one of those little sliver lots. They're proposing a, it's like they're proposing a septic system too, so, you know, doing a redevelopment on it.
Is the well in the septic go?
That will all meet the border health requirements. It's outside our scope. I don't see a.
Where's the next house on the property, that six-foot line? Show?
No, I don't.
There's no.
Yeah, it doesn't.
How did that get sold with the house on that lot? How did that get?
No, 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 it's just on the edge, Mike. It's like the porch is on someone else's line.
The porch? That's not a thing.
You want to look at it? Take a look, Mike. That's, this is the black line and that's where she is. Take a look. So, um.
Oh, it's on Old Tucker Road.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So that's the sliver line and she's just.
Well, there's a, what, a, not a paper street between, you said, you called it Old Tucker Road?
Yeah, the, the road bends and stuff like that and there might be like a driveway that went down, but it's.
And across from that, it doesn't, it doesn't show.
These lines, that's the property? Yeah, that's the property line. That's the existing house. That's the proposed house here in red. The deck that overlaps the pond.
They're moving it back.
Yeah, they're moving it back away from the water. Um, they're working with, in their constraints of the lot, it's a two-bedroom, you know what I mean, so they're, they're gonna meet all the requirements there. I don't know, but, I mean, the ZBA usually doesn't let you, you know, get away with, you know, they don't want ten feet's the minimum, but that's gonna be their call. For our stuff, I.
Starting a non-conforming lot, so it is what it is. They're moving it further away from the lake. No doubt they'll be updating all the systems, including the septic, which is better for the lake anyways. Which is obviously better than what's probably there right now.
But for future reference, I mean, I'd like to see context. I mean, if there's a sandless property and somebody wants to go to six feet in the other guy's property, and the house is six feet already, it starts to create a relationship.
Our level of content is low.
Correct.
But that, that would be, that would be a situation, I think. That would come forth in the ZBA meeting. Our determination is just to look at it and see if we have.
But we can't sort of assess in the future, you know.
It's an improvement over what there is. I mean, you got the water here and you got the road there, you got. Two thirds of the.
Set it down, please.
Set it down?
Pass around. I want to see what I'm missing in this little town.
But here's the lake.
Yeah.
But here's the water line.
So I'm, I'm gonna agree with Mike, you know what I mean, that's, uh, it's an improvement. Quite an old cottage that was there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and they're maintaining it as a two-bedroom, so.
To my consensus.
I concur. Concur.
I got no problem with it.
You're good?
Okay.
All right. How's yours? You got, you got the biggie packet? All right, I'm gonna check. No objections from.
So again, this is a survey and it does show four point four feet of this house on a, on not their property.
I know.
I know, but what do we, do we not, is that not our jurisdiction to?
No.
Right here, what's going on with that?
They're building the house up here. They're tearing that down.
Does it say tear down? It says existing two-bedroom house.
That's what's there right now. They want to put it up.
I know, but shouldn't it say existing house to be raised?
I mean, just. Right there, proposed house.
Proposed house. It's in the print.
Maybe there's a note.
It's print and they highlight it.
It's a special permit, animarians, like you have three houses.
Aaron's right.
It does, it says proposed house.
It says existing house to be removed.
No, because it hasn't been given permission to be removed.
No.
So it's an existing house.
Whenever we do these.
There is a proposed.
All right, sorry. Moving on. Ernie's got his application.
I'll take the packet back.
That's gotta go back here.
Yep, we're gonna talk about this.
All right, this is a.
Do you want me to sign this, Tracy?
ZBA application for a special permit. I'm gonna give that to him.
Yes, thank you, keep it up.
All right. The applicant is requesting a special permit in a rural agricultural zone district pursuant to Massachusetts General laws forty-eight, section nine, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, section nine point three, and section three point four point three, non-conforming structure. To construct a new home and septic system on property located at sixty-five Bigelow Road, assesses map one one, one parcel seventeen. So. In the application, it's rural agricultural, so road frontage is, they have two hundred and twenty-one feet. So that meets the requirement. Okay, lot area is the only requirement they don't meet. It's twenty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-four a square feet. So that's the only one they don't meet. Front setback fifty feet, they meet that. Side setback twenty-five feet, they meet that. The rear setback twenty-five feet, they meet that. And the structure height is thirty feet, which is.
Perfect.
Not above the requirement. So the only thing they want to do is construct a new home on a lot that's already.
Efficient in.
Yeah, non-conforming and existing. And the only thing they don't meet is the area, but they're maintaining all the setbacks. So I don't see any problem with it.
Nope, no objections there.
Okay. Agreed.
Good on that?
Yeah.
All right.
So it'd be just a special permit?
It's a big packet for that. Yep.
Okay, moving right along. A and R plan, JMT Sleepy Hall LLC, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, Joseph Road, possible votes. Come on down.
Mark Allen with Allen Engineering Associates, representing JMT. I don't know if you have a copy of the plan, but I have some paper copies.
We do.
Okay. The applicant is looking to revise four lot lines between lots five and lot nine. Reason being that the foundation for lot five was installed about fifteen feet to the east. And we need to maintain a fifteen-foot setback in the VR zone. So in order to maintain adequate lot width for the, the other four lots to the, to the east, we just wanted to make, sort of share that area. So we went fifteen feet for lot five, and then it's like twelve feet for lot six, nine feet for lot seven, three feet for lot eight.
Boy, it's good it's not at Wilson. You staked it out for them, right? Did you give them offsets for foundation?
The blame pie is a large pie.
It is a large pie.
And we will take the majority of that pie.
So Ian, what did you have for comments on this?
So for the comments of this, it's, um, everything looked very sort of on board. All the setbacks, the minimum frontage was met. And, you know, they're not trying to, you know, expand, everything's staying within the properties. They're just sort of altering the lot lines.
Five lots and they're altering.
And only six lines?
Only six lines?
Yeah.
This board is huge. I was wondering why there's so many seats around this table.
So just for A and Rs, we have to have the seven lines.
Okay.
For future reference, if you could.
So, any questions on this?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Motion for endorsement, you want?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for JMT Sleepy Hall LLC, two thousand twenty-one dash eleven.
Motion made by Drake.
Suck it.
Suck it by Aaron. Do you have a comment? All those in favor?
Would you like me to leave the mylar copies for you?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much.
Not a line.
You want to sign it now?
Can you add a line?
No.
Take them up tomorrow, Tuesday.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm not gonna be able to get them in the office, so.
I know, I know. We could, we could sign them now for him, so he can walk with it.
You want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna sign it now.
Come on back.
You brought it down.
Just undo the mylar.
Usually sign the mylar, you take that and you put the other copy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Since you brought it down.
Got a special pen?
Yeah, there's a couple in the box, hopefully. One.
Oh, there's. Yeah, there's four.
Let's all line up and get this done.
Yep. Do you have the other ones that we can stamp?
Yep.
All right.
Can lay them out on the table. Can lay, you can lay them out on the table back there.
Yeah, we'll stamp those.
Thank you.
In the meeting.
We'll do a sleepy hall?
Yeah.
One doesn't really work too well.
You know, you took my line, right?
What's my line?
The top line.
What's going on, is it?
Twenty-seventh, uh, seven forty. You gotta date it too, Tracy.
I did.
Did you date it?
Yeah. See if I did it right.
There's a center?
Just mylar, we, we.
We got the paper one there.
Paper ones?
Yeah, they're over there.
All right, so I guess we're not gonna be able to get that curry.
These are.
He could present if he can pull up his shelf screen. Oh, we have his plan also.
Yes, man.
Okay, yeah, we have his plan.
Sleepy Hall.
Again, with only six lines.
Yeah.
You could just go put it next to the date.
Huh?
Put your name next to the date. Like put it right here. Skinny.
I just got access, I just got access to the website, so I'll put it in giant letters at the top of the planning board. A and Rs, seven lines.
Yes. Well, Bill had a nice check sheet, so you could, I probably have one, and just go down the list and maybe put that on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have any sign dated?
And we're all A and Rs.
And whites are over there, right?
All added to the top of the, of the website.
We're typically all here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all here.
Okay, Aaron, Mike, Jake, can we just skip back to the scheduling schedule?
So Skanel Properties has for continuance?
Yep.
I'll actually entertain a motion. We can skip this fifty-three until Mike comes back. Seven thirty-five PM, public hearing continued. Skanel Properties, they're requesting a continuance to June tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a time?
At seven PM?
I'll, uh.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on one second. Seven. Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Do you want to do seven forty, do you want to do seven thirty, just in case?
Yeah.
So moved.
Just in case they continue.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's made for seven thirty on the tenth.
Six, ten, twenty-one.
Yep.
Second that.
Second by Les. All those in favor?
Aye. I thought they were gonna be coming tonight.
Yeah.
They're working, I think they're working through stuff.
I will not be at that meeting, by the way, at the June tenth. That is our annual dinner, so I will be.
Oh, nice.
Golfing.
Who's?
What were you dinner?
Les, you're going, CMR PC?
It's at some golf course.
Yeah, it's in Grafton at a, at the Highlands Golf Course.
Oh, Highfield?
Yeah.
We should still have our.
Maybe I should go to.
Not in Scotland.
Probably still have our engineer there anyways, and the traffic is coming.
Yeah, we're working on the decision too, right?
It's a decision. Should the town council be like last time?
Yeah, no, they're working on it.
We talked, we've come up with.
Okay.
We spoke about it. We can have another meeting. Hope, um, hopefully I can give you a little bit more notice, Tracy, if you can make it during the day.
Yes, yeah. That would be good. Yeah, if I'm free, I can definitely do it.
Will our council be there?
Is your schedule pretty flexible during?
Yeah, I just need to see it. I was on the road. Soil testing in the field.
Okay.
I was outstanding in my field.
Will our council be available on the tenth, like he was last time?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I'm actually here this evening. I'm sorry to interrupt and just blurt out.
Hi, thank you.
Just in case anyone had any questions on the continuance I gave them this evening, but I am available on the tenth and I spoke with attorney Broder, so that's an agreed on date, yes.
Awesome.
We're finishing up the draft decision and we'll be all set for the tenth.
Sweet.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Quick question. When, when, when would you share the draft decision with the board prior to the tenth?
Yes, I mean, as soon as it's in a form that's presentable, we'll send you right along, so you have plenty of time to review. We certainly don't want to spray them, so you're reading it there for the first time.
Yeah.
I suppose as soon as it's ready to share, we'll share it.
Yeah, if you can send it to Ian and then he can email it out to the board. That, that way there, we can, we can digest it before the meeting.
Definitely.
Awesome. Thank you. Yep, greatly appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't realize he was on.
Yeah, I.
He must have just popped off.
Yeah, I think Ken was on, Ken's on. And Zach's there.
Fifty-three Mumford Street, so A and R plan, Robert Masako, Stephen Beck.
Oh, good. You'd be continued.
Zachary?
Yes, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Were, were you able to get, to get the plans out of the office?
Yes.
Actually.
I think we're working on it right now. Um, we do have the plans in our packet, so if you would like to do your presentation, just give us an idea.
So yeah, my name is Zachary Bless from Existing Rate, uh, representing the applicant, Robert Mochio, who lives at fifty-three Mumford Street. Uh, the intent of the A and R is, uh, Mr. Beck, Stephen Beck owns all the land on three sides of the May. Mr. Mochio is, the intent of this is just to kind of square off his lot a little bit. I think he thought he owned further back than he did, so he's purchasing, uh, just, just shy of ninety-five hundred square feet out of Mr. Beck's plan. Um, all the existing frontage is remain. Um, all this plan is really to do is to add, again, point two-two acres to the existing parcel at fifty-three Mumford. Um, on the plans, you can see the existing lines that we're going to be removing from that, the lines that will be set a little further, kind of to the north of the existing property.
So we're going, we're going with a non-conforming lot to a new non-conforming lot that's a little bit bigger?
Yeah, exactly. So it, it doesn't need the current area. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It doesn't need an area. So by doing this, it's going to increase the area of the existing lot, so while it's still not going to render it compliant, it definitely brings it closer to where that currently exists.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, wonderful. We do have, yes.
Yep, look at that. We have a mylar.
There you go.
What were your comments for this one?
The comments for this one is, you know, again, if, they're looking to just alter, so, you know, the lot line, six lines. The only thing I was really just wondering about is this right-of-way that I think is stated on the A and R plan that it's not, you know, no one's really too sure what the right-of-way is. It's just, it's, yeah, whether it's just existing, but because everything still fits within the property, um, all, any setbacks, you know, there's no change of buildings, no construction. Yeah, the road, the road, the rear.
So what does the plan book that shows that thirty-foot right-of-way, does it state a purpose?
It's, so when, when we did our deed research, again, it's, it's, the, the way that the deeds are written is that all the deeds are explicitly stating that they don't even believe that right-of-way still exists. However, it is on a record plan, so we wanted to show it, at least as it stands on that record plan. But it's almost in our per, you know, professional opinion that that right-of-way has been abolished at some point in time, but the deeds have never been revised as time's gone on to forcibly remove it from the deed descriptions.
Right.
Um, again, it was at some point, uh, Mr. Beck, who then, who owns all the surrounding land, I think it was back in like 1847, there was inherent use to, to pass and repass over a certain right-of-way for the land that Mr. Beck owns, for the owner back in the 1800s, to use that and then repass, but again, Mr. Beck has, or there's an existing cost for his property, so he already has access to all of that land in the rear. And then again, the deeds, I think, have just never been clarified throughout time to explicitly remove that right-of-way. And again, we're, we're not attorneys on that side of it, so we didn't want to not show it on the plan, but, you know, we believe it doesn't exist at this point.
It does.
Just leave it.
Well, they already have it.
It's already there.
For the same way you're dealing with it, just to leave it because it's shown there, but that, an attorney's going to have to really dig into this at some point, so explicitly remove it, but it's, we believe it is, has been abolished throughout time.
They would need to...
But you have it to be removed on your plan that you're going to be recording.
Right.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Mochio's working with an attorney to get that actually removed, again, it's our opinion that it does not exist, but we're, we're just trying to kind of cover ourselves on the purpose of this plan, but we're still showing it as it is recorded.
Does it say that they weren't removed?
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
See, can't, if, if they find records that it's been removed.
Correct.
If they find a record, they have it.
No, yeah.
Right, right. But that's what he's, oh, absolutely.
That's what he's working on, no.
Agreed, but...
It's outside of scope.
You just can't.
I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan.
Yep.
So moved for 53 Mumford, uh, yeah, 53 Mumford Street.
Mike C., motion?
Second.
Second by Ernie, all is in favor?
Aye. Here again, we need seven lines in our...
I know. Another six liner.
Another six liner.
When and don't put seven.
Okay.
For future reference.
Moving...
Um...
Yeah, we can sign that after.
Since you want to come up?
And we don't have the paper copies?
No.
I think they were in there.
Oh, Zachary, you did drop off paper copies also, right?
That's correct, once we reached the town clerk, there was a Mylar, there was a copy that came in with it.
It was the Mylar.
Okay. Yeah, we need those for the office, copies.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can come pick up the Mylar this week.
We'll sign it.
Yeah, good luck.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 93, under additional business, 93 Davis Street. I'm going to pass this over to my vice chair, and I'm going to recuse myself, I'm just going to stay at the table, so.
All right.
You got this.
I see Teresa's here from ZNT over for 93 Davis Street. If you want to just maybe present to the board what you're looking for.
Oh, guys, just when you thought it was safe to go back in the water, I have a few issues. We're literally 10 days from trying to get on board for my final license, and I just went before the board to select me, and I'm conditioned for the final license with the town. Um, I have packets here for you. The last time I came before you, I said that I was going to give you, um, a letter from Horsaw that my paving would be done, there's six packets here, do you want to pass them out?
Yeah.
Um, then I would give you the letter from Horsaw that my paving would be done on September. So my paving, since I took, I received that modification, that my paving, I could do my binder and stripe it and do everything that I had to do to make it look like it was a finished product, till we got to September 1st, has been brought into question. It's been brought into question that it's not, the binder is not acceptable, and, um, that my temporary handicap area is not acceptable. I have in that packet a letter from Horsaw about the finished product in September, and I also have a letter in there from Horsaw stating that it, um, it's standard practice to what he has there for the, uh, temporary handicap ramp, so there is no trip factor, so that way I can proceed with my, um, to get my certificate of occupancy to open. So I wanted to bring that before you, if it was anything that, um, that we could reiterate, that I have been given a modification, I want to go step by step, that I was given a modification for that, that parking lot.
So I wasn't here for that section of that meeting, but I do know that there was that modification made, that we were going to allow that binder temporarily, till September, till September.
And there's also a letter, a letter in there stating from Horsaw that the temporary handicap ramp is standard practice, that it is acceptable, although it's been brought into question that it's not. I have two, I'm allowed, I have to have one handicap van accessibility per 25 spaces. I have 50 spaces, so that means I only have to have two handicap van accessibilities, but I have, I've gone an extra mile and put in just a handicap, um, for a car. So those two meet the criterion to come in, but it's been put into question that I'm not allowed to do this, so I just wanted to reiterate.
Because of the ramp?
I'm sorry?
Because of the ramp?
Because of the binder and the ramp, the binder is not acceptable and nor is the ramp, but I have documentation.
I mean, the ramp, as long as it meets the 1 and 12, and you have the proper railing height, it could be any material, as long as you don't have more than half inch.
It's the drop, if they only have binder, they don't have the ramp going down to the binder.
They can modify that if they need to, as long as it doesn't exceed 1 and 12. The, the ramp could extend through the binder course, as long as it doesn't exceed 1 and 12 for the ramp, so. And then the ramp has dictations on how long you can go up, and then you have to flatten out, so. I mean, I guess if you can make that, then you can make that.
Well, Horsaw has a letter in there testing to what he put down is standard practice, standard size and practice, that has been acceptable and used in other places.
And I know, I, I went up, uh, Monday and today, um, and the site is looking great, it's...
Looking good?
Um, signs are up, building's up, the building looks great.
Okay.
The binder, I had that binder code on it.
Yeah, okay.
The painting lines are all painted, um, as far as I know, everything that, into my recollection, we've discussed and wanted, I was seeing. Um, I know there was a question with the, the fence in the back, and what we're looking to do going forward with that?
Around the dumpster?
Uh, no, in the back, the rear of the...
Where the drop-off is.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, that's the, what's that, what's that, the rail?
Um, condition number 39.
Yep.
On my modifications.
Yep.
And that was, um, let me just read it here. Condition number 39 was, was modified to that, a building prevent application for the retaining wall on-site as may be required, may be required. The retaining wall shall be designed according to the Massachusetts Building Code, in particular, as it may be related to fall protection, and guardrail as may be needed. Wall may be needed. The original condition was a six-foot wall, seven-foot wall with digression, I don't have any of that.
Correct.
I have a much lower wall, so what was designed for this big wall is calling for a chain link fence and a wood guardrail. Well, since we brought it down, um, it's actually overkill, and it's been brought into question, actually, how am I going to finish off the back of this, this built, this retained wall? Am I going to put a six-foot chain link fence with, with a, a guardrail, wood guardrail with firm? So with COVID and the condition was met, I have a wood, I have in your packet
Yep.
That at any, I, whatever fence I choose, whatever we decide to choose here tonight to be done on the back, I have somebody poised and waiting to do it by June 1st.
And I, I did see material on-site for that to start, they do have beams in place, uh, no, they're not in place where they're going to go, but they are on-site, ready to, ready to go when, uh...
I want, I want, I want to say the fence was probably from when it was originally nine, eight feet.
Doesn't matter, anything over four feet.
Yeah.
You gotta have a fence.
Is the wall staged? The wall staged now? Is that...
It's any wall.
Any wall?
Any retaining wall.
I mean, isn't it a 42-inch rail, a guardrail? You're, it's not, it doesn't have to be a six-foot fence, right? What, what's, what are you talking about fence, you meant rail?
Well, there's, there's a guardrail, and there's, and there's a fence.
But that's so people don't fall over.
Correct.
Anything that's more than 42 or 48 inches on the other side, it just has to be...
Yeah.
It's commercial, so it has to be 42 inches of rail of some sort, just so that people don't...
Yeah, yeah, the school's got it, of course, the school's got it all around their property.
Correct.
But not necessarily a six-foot fence, you know?
No, I don't think you did a 56-foot fence.
All right, so Teresa, I see you're, in the email, you, in the request, you're looking to discuss a slight time relief under the condition. You're in crunch time, I assume.
I'm in crunch time, I literally have 10 days to get this satisfied, to get before the CCC for the 17th. And that's because I have to have everything in 10 days before the 17th, and we have a holiday. So...
Mr. Frazier's on.
I mean, everything I have has to be submitted, basically should be, has to be submitted by the 4th and the 5th. I have a temporary CO that I received today, but I can't get it in hand until I have my MEP signed off, which, I don't understand that, because everybody else already signed off. Fire chief, the electrical, the plumbing, everything's all signed off, everybody's very pleased with the building, I went over and above for this building.
So you have your MPE signed off.
I'm sorry?
You have your MPE signed off.
My MPEs, I have...
Mechanical, plumbing, electric.
My mechanical, plumbing from my...
And electrical.
GCs, I have my GBI, but I don't have my Dennis Caldwell, that will be done on Tuesday.
No load test on the generator, yeah?
Yeah, that's the Leo Gas can get you gas in a minute. You said that there was a propane issue?
No, 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 I have a le, no, I have no...
No, well, they said there was no fuel to, to run the full load test on.
Well, my generator first came out.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it was supposed to be an 80, it's now 100.
Yeah.
So I needed two 1,000-gallon tanks, so when it came on for them, I have a letter in there from the propane, the generation tool, that is a test to see that it was up and running.
You realize that?
But they couldn't do full load until January, June 1st, because the, um, they only had 300 gallons in there, so they couldn't run it for, for two straight hours to get it to full load. They're coming back June 1st.
Because of the pressure.
Yeah, they're coming back, I have a letter in there from Jackie, who is the, uh, the company that is doing the propane, and, um, it attested that it was up and running, and they'll be back on June 1st to do the full load.
Okay.
Because I needed, because I had to fill 2,000 gallons, uh, 2,000 gallons of propane to get it to full load. I was also, um, informed that that is the beginning of a log, that's the beginning of a log of my propane, that I, I'm keeping it up and maintained.
Yep.
And that, that should suffice that, because you have to think, I understand, my, my propane, my, my generator isn't for anything other than security cameras from CCC, it has nothing to do with my building itself.
So why are you required to...
No, it's...
Thousands of gallons, so, I don't know, it's like, as you're pending something.
So what are you, what are you, what are you here for today? What are you requesting, what are you looking for?
I'm here to request some tattoos. I'm here to clarify some issues, because it's been brought to my attention, that some of the things that are in my conditions, that even though I'm allowed to do, are not acceptable.
Not by us.
Okay, such as, let's, let's roll.
Such as my parking lot binder and my temporary, um, handicap.
Okay, who's saying that it's not acceptable?
Yeah, pass that to, is it Mr. Frazier that, uh...
Yeah.
He's saying that they're not acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and, and the reason being is what?
Because it's a binder, and it should be fully done.
Yeah, but we've already addressed that, haven't we?
Correct.
Well, we've, we have addressed it, but I don't know what state code is. Okay, so what's the next one?
Hold on.
And the next one is the fence in the back.
All right, right here, it says it'll be done by the 5th.
Fence.
21.
Ramp.
Correct, but what am I doing back there? Am I doing the full load of the six-foot fence and, and the wood guardrail when...
If that was in the condition, yeah.
But that was for a six-foot wall, I don't have a six-foot wall.
If that's in the condition, what size wall is it? How tall is it? Four feet, five feet?
Yes, two steps, two steps.
Well, I don't have an ass belt in front of me, so I can't answer that. So the way I feel right now, it stays the way it's written, on that aspect of it. Because I have no proof of what's really back there.
Correct.
So I'm going to go to Mr. Frazier, I know he's online, um, just for his input as to what's going on.
May I speak to the board?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is Ken Frazier, the building inspector in town. Uh, I've been onto the site a couple of times, and there's a lot of issues that have not been resolved outside of the fact of the fencing on the retaining wall. There has been no documentation from the engineering firms that were part of the construction control for the building, the electric, mechanicals. I haven't got any of that documentation from anybody that I have been done. The generator is part of the safety system, it was required by the CCC, it was not required by the building department, but we're part of the safety system, the generator needs to be run, it's not even perfect, uh, condition, there's no safety switch on the generator. I spoke with my electrical inspector, and he said that he's willing to allow that to go until they can get there and do it, they're supposed to be having, I believe the company's supposed to be coming into a startup, uh, sometime next week, if I'm not mistaken. As far as the handicap requirements, whether it's a binder code or a finish code, we still have to follow the guidelines of the ADA requirements for the handicap accessibility. So that was an issue that I spoke to, with regards to getting this proper signage out, making sure that the temporary ramping system that they're putting in on top of the asphalt binder is correct. We don't need anybody following that.
Correct.
When it comes to the, the retaining wall in the back of the property that was put up to maintain the elevations, I still have no engineering documentation on that wall. And as the code reads, any wall in excess of four feet, including the foundation, is required to have engineering documentation, any wall in excess of 10 feet, including the foundation, is required to have engineering control.
Correct.
I have nothing on that wall, uh, nothing has been provided. With regards to fall protection?
Yep.
Anything over 48 inches, you're supposed to have both vehicular and pedestrian protection from falling, there's nothing there. The, uh, property owners spoke that they were going to put a temporary jersey barriers up, they're still not there, so I do have concerns.
Okay.
I also spoke with them with regards to giving them a temporary CO so that they can proceed forward with the CCC requirements, so that they can get their inspection with the CCC.
Good.
I'm not asking for a walk-through, there's multiple items that were not completed in the building on the first walkthrough, the second walkthrough, there was substantial completion on those items. As it stands, I spoke with the general contractor on the job, who's only responsible inside the building, I don't really know who it is that's responsible for the outside of the building, but I spoke with him with regards to the inside of the building, and he is supposed to be getting the documentation from all the engineering company. So once I have documentation from the engineering company, and I have some semblance of what's going on with the retaining wall and fall protection in the interim, I do not have a problem with issuing a temporary CO.
So Ken, if, uh, Ken, Big Schulzberg talking, um, if temporary jersey barriers are set up along that back, will that satisfy your needs, uh, until the fence can get constructed?
It would satisfy the needs, uh, if the public is not invited into the property. Now, the applicant had expressed that it would only be herself, her partner, and one other person in there setting up for point-of-sale use, and if that is the case, that is acceptable.
So, um...
If they are planning on doing anything with an opening or anything else like that, that would need to be...
What's the opening date? Uh, so if I can ask Teresa a question, if all goes well, everything gets done right, you go to the CCC, when would you be open in best-case scenario?
Best-case scenario is I go to the, I'm 17, I'm deemed to complete, I get my final, um, it could be anywhere up to 20 to 30 days, where I will be allowed to bring the product in, um, log it all in, make sure everything is up and running, because they have to make sure that my cameras are doing what they're supposed to do. And then once they do a final walkthrough and see that all my product is there, all my product is logged incorrectly, everything I say I have is there, and all my employees have been through their register, they have, all my employees have to go through DCI, all my employees have to do a metric system, a 2O metric system, and they all have to do a, uh, register, they have to be registered, certified. Once that's all done, then I'll get a commence.
That's fine, so, because, um, because he was saying the jersey barriers were satisfied as long as the public's not going. Until the 30th of July or whatever you open. Right.
Right.
So, so any extension or what we have, it's going to cover you and, up until...
Right.
The public would be invited, because you're not going to be open.
Right, I, I don't have plenty of time, what I'm, what the issue is here is, is a few things that are being addressed that, um, I'm being told I have to deal with, that I don't have anything to deal with, especially... But what I'm saying is, is a temporary, a temporary CO is supposed to be like my conditions, I get my temporary CO with a, a list of conditions, so I can get to my CO. But he said he issued me a temporary CO, but he won't give it to me until I meet the conditions.
Right.
That's not the, that's not the purpose of the temporary CO.
There's some things you can knock off this list, right?
Well, we've got to back up, number one, that wall has to be engineered and stayed.
Right, that's, that's easy, why can't they just get it done?
Why doesn't he have it then by now? The, the wall's up, why, why doesn't our inspector have it?
From the engineer, whoever engineered the wall.
Was, was the staffed-off engineer for the wall?
Who did the wall?
The staffed-off engineering was only supposed to be if it was six feet.
No, any wall.
Four feet, over four feet.
That, that's wrong, that, yeah.
So you're, so... Just have them take care of that, I mean, it's not, that's a one item. Now, the other thing, the MPE, you have to satisfy, the building inspector has to sign off, but after your engineers who installed your mechanicals, your plumbing, electrical, sign off, and then it goes to him, and then he can sign, this is hard. And, and, and he's certainly willing to work with you, I think, to get the CO, and I think you can get there.
Well, not, I'm not, for the CO, I have a lot of things I have to do to actually get the full CO. What my, what the, what the semantics here is that a temporary CO is issued to you with conditions to finish to get to your CO. What I'm saying is, is, he said I have a temporary CO, but he's not giving it to me to bring to the CCC today, I can actually push a button and send it today, he's telling me he won't give me that until I get my MEP, but that's part of the conditions.
What's the drop dead date to CCC?
Yeah.
That's what we want, we are...
Well, the drop dead date is actually, should have been tomorrow, because they still have to do a virtual tour for, before 10 days.
Well, what's the 17th, that's including the 10 days, the 17th?
I have to get everything in by the 7th, because I have to have everything 10 days.
Well, Ken, what do you need the planning board to do to make this work?
Yeah, that, no, no, that's not concerned, we don't care about that.
As far as the planning board goes, I mean, I don't need the planning board really to do anything other than, you know, if, if the guidance of the, the walls, the retaining walls, and the, and the fencing, and the guardrails, and, uh, I was told by the applicant that there was another set of plans that shows no fence over the top of the wall. Uh, the plans that I have in the office show a fence over the wall, they show guardrails for vehicular traffic on the guardrails, pedestrian traffic on the fencing, so I haven't got a definitive as far as which plan was the final approved from the planning board, that would be...
How do we not have that?
Step two would be, until she satisfies the engineering requirements, I am not in a position to be issuing temporary or permanent COs.
Correct.
I have no documentation from any of the engineering firms that have done any of the projects, with regards to their inspections through the process, and their final sign-off, whether it be a temporary CO or a permanent CO.
So, correct. How, how, how tall is that wall in the back?
CO at this point, if we get some type of barrier protection up on the back end of that property, that would be great. I am looking forward to engineer documentation with regards to...
So I, I think...
Buildings and the documentation on that retaining wall.
So I, I think the applicant needs just our blessing to put up that temporary jersey barrier to satisfy that need.
It's mute, because the idea is, is, until we know the wall's even engineered to carry the width of a jersey barrier, where are you going to put a jersey barrier up? Because he has absolutely nothing to go by, for I know, it's held together with, you know, sticks and mortar.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's at the applicant's risk, through the chair, please, it's at the applicant's risk for us to say, okay, go ahead, put your jersey barriers up, because Ken still doesn't have to sign off on anything until he gets that engineering anyway. If, if we're going to allow the jersey barriers as a temporary barrier for now... If, if we're gonna allow the jersey barriers as a temporary barrier for now so she can get one step further in the process, I haven't got a problem with that. But as far as signing off on the final...
Oh, no, no, no.
No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, she can't even open to the public until it's all done.
She, she, she can move forward by us saying, yeah, okay, jersey barriers are fine for now and they'll do an inspection and say, okay, then that's, I have no problem with that.
But what's the public? Once you start having employees here...
Well, this isn't, this isn't for the public. This is for...
Inspection.
We're not gonna sign off for the public, Ken's not gonna sign off for the public until...
He can't even sign off on anything.
So, I gotta just...
This was the problem that I was...
I have no problem with putting the jersey barriers up for now.
I'm gonna give Ken a... Ken, can you just start again, please? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you just start again?
Okay. The problem I was having with the applicant was if you're looking for a temporary CO and nobody's gonna be there other than the three people that she mentioned, herself, her partner, and one other, then it's not as big an issue. But then it came into, well, we're gonna be bringing people in for interviewing once we get approvals from the CCC and then they've gotta go through training. So now we're starting to introduce public and I have no timeframe as to when we have these protections available. All we need is one vehicle to go through a wall, the end, one person to go through the wall. They're gonna be coming back to me and saying, how did she get the documents?
I, and, and that's a point I'm trying to get across is the minute you start bringing in people, like employees or bringing in material to start setting up, you're bringing in the public. It changes the whole scenario.
It's still controlling the site. What's...
It sounds like...
Just a question. When, if you're gonna do the six-foot fence, when is that looking to be put in? So...
I can have that six-foot fence put in on June 5th. What I'm saying is, is Ken just made a clear statement that if I have a condition on me that the only people that will be in that building is myself, Aziz, and Brian, who is my administrative consultant, and he will give me that temporary certificate of occupancy that I can submit to the CCC tomorrow. If that's the condition, that nobody else will be in that building other than us until I satisfy everything else, then why can't we move forward that way so I can get to the CCC tomorrow?
I, I, I think, I think...
Why don't we let Ken answer?
I, I still need engineering documentation for that project, being mechanical, electrical, building...
You should have that.
On that project that I have none of. And I also want the engineering on that retaining wall.
Yes.
Can you get that?
That can be done later. Yes, that can be done later. I have...
No, no, but Teresa, Ken knows...
You need the engineer, he can do anything. He has to have all of them.
Can you get the wall, the MPE, which is from your subcontractors to the building department?
They will come out on Tuesday. They're coming out on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So that is Tuesday.
Have those items and he's gonna give you a temporary CO if you get those into it and he approves that.
Because he, he, the, the engineering on the wall is needed. He needs that, you know, that...
For everything?
I don't think that's, the wall's already in place, whoever did it can have that done. The mechanical and the other, yeah, all those...
That's nothing to do with us. No, 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 no.
But it's what, but they, they're probably already done.
So, I don't know why we're here.
So I just wanna wrap, try to wrap this up and move it along. So, planning board wise, I think she needs our blessing that the jersey barriers are okay temporarily for now.
No, I'm saying no because who's gonna police, only three people are gonna be there? Who's gonna police that?
What's up, that's a...
The two owners in the, in the administration.
Right, who's gonna police that? So...
Well, they're not gonna open. I mean, they're not gonna...
They could start interviewing.
Who's gonna send the police over and arrest them? Maybe they're gonna get it done.
She can, she can... Normally, an engineer would, would...
She can enter, she can...
Watch it being done probably or just okay it, but we don't have that.
But will Ken, Ken monitor that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Ken can monitor.
Yeah, I have no problem with Ken, I have no problem with Ken doing that.
Seven cars in the parking lot, then he can step in and just pull up.
So I think...
Mechanical, electrical, all that, that's got nothing to do with us.
No.
Our discussion is about this temporary wall and about the engineering for the wall that's already installed.
So, Ken, how do you feel on that aspect of it? Of it being monitored so that it is only the three people? Is that a mute point or do you feel that can be monitored and controlled?
Okay, I guess probably the best bet or the best thing I would think is to get some kind of a timeline of when we're gonna have permanent fall protection on that wall. And that could be a big guidance to moving forward with all our occupancy, whether they're temporary or permanent. So if you get a timeline from, you know, a written timeline from the applicant with regards to the fall protection and the, I, I, I'm not even so concerned about the guardrails as I am more about the fall protection.
Correct.
From any traditional personal marking back.
No, we have a document here handed to us stating that'll be done, uh, see, uh, ten minutes fence installed, behind the guardrail. All work will be completed by June 5th, 2021.
That's next week.
So that's next week. Is that, is that fact?
Help with the full temporary occupancy and I'm, I'm even willing to go out to a 60-day temporary occupancy. I understand there are time constraints with the CCC and I'm not trying to hold them up for that. But the last formal thing to that is I need the engineer sign off in all aspects of that project.
Correct.
So if I get the engineer sign off
Yep.
and I get the letter of statement saying when they're gonna have this fall protection in there, I get it to my office, I have a reasonable time to review what I get there, I have no problem issuing temporary occupancy.
And you can, and you can monitor the, the occupancy with the three people?
Yeah, it would have to be, you know, that would be a stipulation out right on the occupancy, the temporary occupancy.
Well, after the fall protection is in, you wouldn't have to worry about who's there at that point.
After what?
I mean, the, the bottom line was today it was I will issue you, I issued you a temporary occupancy, but I'm not gonna hand it to you until you do your mechanics. So the rest of everything that has to be done to get to a CO, we all know I have to do the fence, I have to do the guardrail, he has to accept the binder, you know, with the, with the temporary handicap. There's a guardrail that is the highway department that he's questioning that I have to take care of.
Which is baby steps. I think Teresa is trying to, let's get you this thing so the three of you can be in there, let's get the retaining wall engineered. I know this is not all our department, but the MPE, if this stuff is installed, it all should be done.
No, 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 I'm just trying to clarify what I have to do on the property because what I've told him...
It sounds like from one of them kind of gathering.
What I've told I have to do on the property and what he's telling me I have to do is two different things for my conditions. That's why I'm here.
He's, it's different steps. June 5th, you know, you get the...
If I can have one more, it...
Yeah, go ahead, Jake.
It, it sounds like you just need to get the engineered plans submitted to him, have them stamped approved that they can support a jersey barrier for the temporary, submit to him the timeline for the fence and all, and bring in all that engineering stuff.
The timeline for the fence is in the package. I'll have all that done on the...
But he wants a personal one addressed to the building inspector.
I think, I think he would need a summary. I think he needs a summary of that, of what's going on there. He does, he does need the engineering of, of the wall, of what we built.
And if, and if they can support the jersey barriers, I think we could choose a blessing that we're okay with that.
And the other engineering items related to the building, which I, any contractor should have or submitted, he just needs a copy of them, again, should be fairly quick.
I'm gonna back up here a bit. It feels like we're playing babysitter here. It's between the building inspector and them on letting everything in. We have nothing to do with any of it.
They just have to...
I'm saying, we have a, we have a wall that's not engineered yet and now you're gonna say you're gonna put jersey barriers on top of it.
That's why I just said she's gotta get the engineered stamp.
You got, okay, great, so...
So if I get my engineering stamp on Tuesday, do I get my, my certificate?
That's up to the building inspector, ain't it, to us?
My temporary certificate of occupancy.
That's gonna be up to him.
Well, that's what he said. He said if he gets his MEPs, I, he'll hand me my, my...
No, he's not saying he's gonna give you a full certificate of occupancy with MEPs. But he's got, right. My, my advice, just because I'm doing this all the time, is get the MPE signed off, get the wall engineered, right? Give him a timeline. He'll give you a, a temporary occupancy for the three of you for the next whatever, couple of weeks and then get more done and then you get a full temporary and then get more done and you get a final. It sounds like you're on your way and he's being reasonable, I think.
Well, I'm not on my way, that's why I'm here.
Wait, I'm gonna back up. I mean, this is out of our realm. This is all to do with the building inspector. He has the full say on it.
He's the man.
Totally understand what he's saying and I agree with whatever he wants done. And that's the end of the conversation with us.
Yeah, we approve on our own for now.
We've already, we've already done, signed stuff off, passed it on. You know what it is, he knows what it is, it's between the two of you.
Correct. And the, the...
That's it.
The building commissioner said he was okay with the, you know, and the board as well, Ernie mentioned it. We're okay with the, the jersey barriers in there. You're not open to the public, you're still moving along.
Right.
That's, that's it.
You get to the CCC.
That's, I mean, I think what, what Mr. Frazier's asked for is part of the punch list that would get you to your, your final occupancy permit, but he needs that material in front of him. If you can get that by Tuesday, which, you know, all the contractors that you've hired brought in there should be able to provide fairly quickly because they've already done the work. They've already, they're just middle.
They actually shouldn't be paid final until they get it all signed off and all the engineering stamped. They shouldn't be paid. They should be after, after the client to get this done and get it in.
Yeah, this isn't, we're done.
So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move on from this.
We're moving on.
I think a lot of the questions you were looking for...
Something just got added tonight that wasn't added this morning. This morning, it was clearly stated to me that I would be handed my certificate of occupancy, my temporary certificate of occupancy when he received my MEPs. That was it.
Let's move forward.
Now you've just added the wall to that. That wall wasn't added into that this morning. What I would just get me my MEPs.
The wall is easy.
It's coming Tuesday. So I get that temporary occupancy on Tuesday, I can hand it to the CCC and get on to the 17th.
It sounds like he's ready to do it.
From there, from there is all the other stuff to get to my CO, which would be my wall, my...
We're beyond, we're beyond our realm here, guys.
Do you see the separation there? Temporary, the temporary, just for the MEPs, so I can get...
If I can maybe find something, Ernie, for his experience in what...
We're, we're going beyond our realm here.
Yeah, I, I'm, Ken, Ken's in agreement that he wants to see the engineering on the wall.
Whatever.
Okay, so you get that.
Whatever he wants.
And he's okay with the temporary jersey barriers. If that satisfies what you need to get the next step in your progression of whatever you have to do, I have no problem with the jersey barriers being installed as a temporary barrier. But when it comes to the final sign off, you're still gonna have to have that engineering stamp for that wall.
Oh, I get all of it.
And you'll have, you'll have to have the other stuff done temporarily.
I mean, I have letters in there saying that I'm gonna have, if you want, if you're telling me I have to have a chain link fence and a wood fence, I'll have it done by the 5th.
Okay.
So that's, that's not, that's what I'm saying. If you're telling me, if you're saying that my binder is okay with my temporary handicap, which...
Point of origin, this is beyond, we're done.
Yeah, we can't, you're...
Don't everybody talk, don't even let her finish. Don't even talk it, it's too much when everybody's talking at once. Go ahead, Teresa, finish what you're saying.
So, I just came here to clarify a few points that were brought out to me by Mr. Frazier.
Yeah.
Okay, between my conditions, what the board approved, and what he's asking for. It was two different things. I know what my conditions are. He's saying it's something else that we can deal with to get to CO. I don't have a problem, we have plenty of time to do that. My issue was that my temporary certificate of occupancy was told to me it was only being held up by MEPs, which I will have on Tuesday after that. Because what the temporary is, is you tell me the conditions that I need to satisfy to get to the CO. So the only condition that was put on me for a temporary was my MEPs. So I will have that for him for Tuesday. He hands me my temporary because that was the condition he told me today.
All right.
After that, okay, is the rest of everything else that we have to do that he wants from me that are part of my conditions. You say I have to do a chain link with, with that wood, I'll do it. I'm not gonna pay for jersey barriers. Put them down, take them out, put a fence in, okay? He wants me to give him the same letters that you have, that whole packet, that extra packet right here that I can, you can give to him tomorrow with all the letters.
That's between you.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is what I'm here for now is, I was told it was a chain link and wood if it was, if the wall was over six feet, okay? It's not over six feet, but you still want me to uphold that? Not a problem. That will be done by the...
Yeah, I think if, if, if in the planner has the fence, let's put the fence in.
Yeah.
If, if the wall's four feet, six feet, eight feet, let's put the fence in.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. That's what you want. That's what I'm gonna do, okay? Because I have always done everything you asked me to do.
All right, then.
So you gave me a waiver on my binder, so that way I can move forward with that. We all know that's gonna be done September 1st.
Yeah, the, yeah, the binder's no problem.
To hold up my CO. Because he's making, he's saying it's gonna hold up my CO. If I satisfy everything and the only thing I have left is that, is because my, my landscaper have a letter in it starting June 1st. So if I satisfy everything and the only thing that's left is that binder, September 1st, is he gonna hold up my CO when you gave me permission to do that?
That's up to the town inspector. It's nothing to do with...
And we did give them...
It's nothing to do with...
So, if he's looking at our plan or the, the plan, we did modify it to have the binder.
Right.
But it still has to meet handicap requirements. If he's saying it doesn't because of certain conditions of what's being done there, then she has to meet it. According, the binder's fine, but who knows what else he might be looking for to make it legal.
All right, so I think, I think she's got what she's needed out of this board for tonight and I think you got enough to go forward with what you have to do with the building inspector.
So MEPs Tuesday, I get my temporary to give to the CCC.
Get the engineered wall.
And then everything else after that.
And as far as the fence, if it's on the plan, put it in. If it's four feet, two feet, if it's on there, just throw it in.
If, if there's a change in the plans, they need to go through the planning board, they need, I need to have documentation to be saying, listen, this site does not, does no longer need the chain link fence or whatever the order of conditions, that's why I require when I do that, the site walk in.
For now, do the fence. So we, we did modify it for the binder that the last meeting, I don't know why it didn't get really.
That means that's the rating that you modified.
Fine.
It was in public record.
Yeah.
Yeah. The binder's been, yeah, but that's been approved and mo- that's been modified and approved by us, yes.
I'll send, I'll send an email, so Ken has it, I'll send an email tonight to Ken regarding the date when we had our meeting and our discussion regarding the binder. So he has it for his file and that, you know, that the ADA has to still be met.
Okay.
With the, with the binder. So I'll make sure Mr. Frazier has that.
Can you go with us for now?
Lastly, I'm going to question my dumpster. I have an asphalt dumpster pad. I, um, in the Douglas Bible laws, 5 dot 4 dot 3 says I only need to have it with a chain link fence. It does not specify that I have to have asphalt or concrete or anything. I'm being asked for concrete.
For the post?
For the landing pad where it sits.
Oh, the landing pad, oh, oh.
Although I already have an asphalt one there.
What does it say in the plan that was approved?
Yeah, what's it saying in the plan?
I don't know what it says on the plan.
I, I just confirm what.
I just have a spot where my dumpster's supposed to go.
Whatever the engineer, whatever we approved is what.
Yeah, whatever's approved in the plan is what.
Who's requesting the concrete?
Mr. Frazier. But there's nothing in the Bible laws that says I have to have concrete.
No.
5 dot 1 dot 3.
First, let's see what's on the plan.
Yeah.
Then go from there. If it says concrete on the plan, the reason they don't want to do asphalt is those dumpsters are gonna melt into the asphalt.
You have to understand my place is gonna be maybe a two yard. That's all it is, is a little two yard, even that.
And that means a small concrete pad if these are requiring that.
That's a mute subject. The idea is, is to steal dumpster. Any place of business, you see, they all have concrete.
See what the plan says.
I'll just check with the plan.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yep.
You good with that?
Yeah. Check with the plan and, if it's something that's gonna hold you up, though, just do it. I don't know. But then you'd have to change it, but it's on the plan.
Yeah. But, but even if it said asphalt and building inspector wants the concrete, just do the concrete, it's just a small area.
Yeah. I, I'd better off with concrete.
This is every town, whatever the building inspector says.
If the plan says concrete, put concrete. If it doesn't say concrete, I would put concrete anyway, because it's, you're better off. Asphalt's not gonna last when a dumpster's there.
He's the inspector.
Would they just have to get modified on the plan if it's concrete versus asphalt that was to get changed?
I don't have probably the plan at first.
Yeah, we can't say. We don't know. Do what the plan, do what the plan says.
Yeah.
That's the plan we approved.
Right, but what she's saying is if, if the plan called for asphalt and the building inspector's asking for concrete.
It, then, then that can be pointed out to him to say the approved plan has asphalt there and.
Is he online still?
Yeah, he's there. Again, if it, if that's what they approved.
I have, I do have one plan in the office that was the plan that was left there when I came into the office. That plan does show the things that we're talking about. It shows the dumpster pad, a concrete pad with the fence around it. It shows the retaining wall in the back. It shows the guardrails. It shows the chain link fence.
Okay. Okay.
The concrete pads.
I do not have another plan that shows.
Okay.
So, so you got a plan, Ken, and, you know, since you reviewed the plan, is it specific? Does it call out concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
And then concrete's what has to be there.
That's it.
And that's in the conversation?
Yeah. The, the reason why is because of the.
If the applicant would like to come to the office on Tuesday and take a look at the plans in the office, I'll be more than happy to open the plans up in the office and discuss whatever you'd like to discuss with regards to that.
Awesome.
All right.
I think that's perfect.
All right, thanks for being helpful, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There was a question, please.
Yes, my question was, so my question was, is I given my MEPs on Tuesday, I get my temporary CO, and then the rest can move from there.
Why did he forget in the wall, though? He wants the wall.
That wall wasn't added in today. My building, all my CCC needs is the building. That's all they need is the building.
Stop.
So, yeah, you, you can work with him on getting, getting that.
That's it.
But we, we took care of what was needed for the planning board tonight.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, he's your problem.
All right. All right. Yeah, moving on.
Coming back, Teresa.
Yes. I'm back.
All right, chair is back.
Number two discussion, morning view.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Conceptual plan, southwest Main Street, Rich Goslin, spatial data and design. Was that supposed to be conceptual?
Yeah, just.
Not, we're, we're not having.
Conception. Nobody here for it.
We're not making it, right?
Yeah.
Did you write that? I did not write that.
Just trying to go through this instead of going through the whole process of designing and spending all that money for nothing.
Right.
Because you're not happy with certain things. I'd rather find out what you're happy and not with, you know?
Make the plan.
Before I go for a make. Yeah, kind of the way.
So is this in our regulation for a concept plan submitted before, so it's a discussion item? It's a discussion item. Um, do you have the section? I was looking at the, the subdivision rules and rights. Do you have some plans for us?
I just, no, I've got the same stuff here. I just, I wanted to go through the, it's more of an idea of.
You just wanna get an opinion.
Yeah, I, yes.
No.
I like professional.
You want to look at, you must be, it's not in your package?
I like ownership on all lands.
No.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
Has the picture of the house on it?
You don't have to, you wanna look at this one?
Yeah, I'll take a quick.
Come on.
As long as it's not that house.
Okay. All right, so this is kind of like the precursor for a filing, right? Right. In our, in our regs.
Yeah, just to, to let you know in a general, you've got these anyway, but the, you know, the site location is approximately 18 acres.
What are these two things, these rectangles up here?
What's that?
What's that now?
Uh, those two you're looking at are where the houses.
Existed.
Yeah.
There are two twin houses? Is that what? Okay, whatever.
So, ultimately, um, you know, we have public water service. There are no, there, there are no wetlands on the lot at all. The excess, uh, the excess road going in is, is a piece of contention that we need to discuss. The problem with it, when it was designed way back when, um, and I forgot the dates here, but anyway, it was designed with a 40-foot right-of-way when they originally cut this land out to get into this parcel.
Regulations call for 50 now.
Yeah, I, I understand. Well, I think it's, isn't it 60 now or something like that? Or they, I don't know. Anyway, the problem is we got a stretch of road going in that we can't, it's 40 feet wide. It was designed at 40 feet wide when they cut this whole lot out, and I think, we can't get around it 40 foot wide width until we go in. And then if you want 60 feet, we can make it 60 feet, but we got a problem with that first entrance.
When was that first concept, before, when did this come before the board? Before, you're saying this came through before, at 40 feet? And when did the 40 change to 50?
No, 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 no. Way back, way back in the 60s or whatever, when they built those houses, 40 feet was a norm. Now it's not.
What was it, when did it become 50 feet?
Six, or are we talking right-of-way or road width?
Road width for, to get into development like this.
Let's see, uh, we've got Churchill Road is built in. Was that done in the 70s when they did? That was in 88.
No, no.
They had a.
Churchill?
No, no, when they went from the 40 feet. And the Brookside Drive is the same way.
So it's been over a quarter century since then?
Yeah. Right? The same value. Well, and everything, we've been on the boards, it's been, what, 50 feet, right?
Since the 90s.
90s? Yes.
That's what our record was.
So.
Well, this is in our rules and regs, so they're requesting waivers from.
We needed a waiver for that entrance road going in till we can get to the 60-foot to make it comply with what you're looking for.
What was the concept of going to 50? Why did they go to 50 versus 40? What was the hardship on neighbors and access to?
It was when they started implementing underground utilities and all that stuff and drainage and.
Water sewers.
Just water.
Make water sewers.
And more, people weren't just putting in roads and putting in houses and everything, it was more, more stuff starting to come in.
So this will be all private wells?
No.
Do you still have drainage?
So, so the reason they went to 50 is because of bringing in public sewerage, public water, whatever.
Drainage.
Sidewalks.
And now you're gonna utilize that.
Sidewalks.
You're gonna have the 50?
Because it was before all that existed.
No, I know, I know.
You weren't asking for sidewalks, you weren't asking for underground utilities.
If you could do 60, we'd do it.
You were asking for a road. Now it's, it's different. You're asking for a lot more stuff on the right-of-way.
Flyer from these neighbors, fuck if they, if you don't put them into jeopardy.
It's kind of been approached and, no.
So they're not.
That's not gonna.
So the neighbors are not necessarily in support of this project per se, is that, should that not be implied in what that means?
Well, I'm not sure if they're in support or not, they're just not willing to sell it here like. I mean, I won't care about the 40, it is what it is.
Yeah, I do, I do.
It is what it is.
Yeah, we have a plan that shows, that calls, you know, safely accessing the lot on 40 feet.
So, once I get inside his area, you make it 60 feet, like you said. I mean, we're looking at.
I don't really have a problem with the 40 either. I mean, it's plenty wide to, yeah.
So as far as this initial list of waiver, so you're still going to, you're not gonna request any reduction in the page width? And you're still doing one sidewalk?
Well, I got a, I got a list of things that I would like to do, and I'd like to get your feedback on it, okay? I mean, that's why we're here.
Okay, so I think the width, um, the first one is the width. What I'm hearing from the board is we're comfortable with granting that waiver.
Yep.
Curbs and berms, um, seats waiver for curbing berms. Can you tell us about that? Cause berms tend to keep the runoff.
Right. Well, see, I don't know how you, you look at the green space and the open space type of an environment with, with the roads. So where you don't have a, per se, a curb, but you have a, a swale which catches the water, instead of, you know, put catch basins in and traps and all of this stuff, and then pumping it into a, a retention area, this way here, the swales would go into.
Low impact.
Like a green.
Development.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, but they're gonna, yeah, slow impact, but it goes into a retention area where it's treated and everything, it's just not treated underground. So that affects, obviously, we need the water to run along the road, so if we start putting berms and everything in it, it ain't gonna work. So that's what we're trying to figure out is, you know, how, how do you feel about that? On the 40-foot area where you're going between pre-existing homes, no way, because you're gonna be adding water to their properties. So that ain't gonna happen. You're gonna have to get the water out of this area.
How many, how many, how many houses are you talking about?
Eight?
Well, depends, you have two versions. We're, we're looking for an open space, to be honest with you, which has 12. 12. 12.
There's no way you're gonna be able to put in 12, a 12-house subdivision without designing some type of stormwater management and dealing with all the water that's gonna come off.
No, I understand that.
MEPs, you have to meet the requirements.
I'm saying is, do we put it underground or do we put it over, because we do, we do realize we're gonna be designing a detention area, the tree there, all of this stuff, obviously. So why are you going conventional?
What's wrong with conventional? What's the downside of it?
Can we go back one step as far as the stormwater goes? You're going to have to meet the requirements anyway. So if you can get away with a low impact with, you know, the burming and stuff, we would have to, we would have to see if we can eliminate that. It's whatever the engineer's gonna design to meet the requirements of the state.
So it's a, let's put it that, it's a possibility.
Yeah.
If it works, then you're happy with it.
As long as it meets, as long as it meets the requirements.
Except for, like I said, except for between the pre-existing homes. Well, obviously, we gotta collect that water and get it out of there and bring it back. You cannot be putting any water on any of these. I agree, I agree completely. You're not gonna get me to argue with you. All right. As long as you all, I'll mind yourself. I know the order with that.
Okay.
The one sidewalk, that's, that's been standard practice.
So you've got a curb there.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah, the, the, there was a request for the, the sidewalk on one side because of the small dead end.
Yeah, one curb only.
That's fine, yeah.
And then we're looking for, um, when we get to the sidewalk, there's a grass strip. I wanted to eliminate the grass strip. We eliminate the grass strip, then we can, we're not gonna be able to plant the trees in the grass strip.
No.
So, so.
You've already gone through that.
Yeah.
We'll wave the trees.
We'll wave the trees. Okay, I'm just trying to go through this, because I don't, you know, like if anything else, you draw this all out, spend all that time engineering it, and you come in and you say, oh, no, you don't have to.
Grab the sidewalk and no strip.
The. And the, and the lights, do you guys? Uh, let's, let's back up on the lights. Okay. This would be a situation where if you're gonna be having a central mailbox or not, we'll have to know that.
That's up in the post.
Right, but if it's a central mailbox, normally we've been requesting a light.
Oh, they don't know on the mailbox?
They're gonna want that.
So that has to be known before you even go forward with the postmaster.
Okay.
All right, and then you have to find a spot where they, well, they'll, they'll tell you where they're gonna put it.
Yeah, they, yeah, they tell you.
And then you'll have to set up some type of lighting that isn't gonna glare the pre-existing houses in there.
Right, right.
But there's gonna be a light in an area for people to pull off the road or whatever.
Like a dark, dark sky lighting, even though we don't have that, but that would be.
So, so the other question I had is the width of the pavement, the actual pavement going in there, what do you look for in these things?
What do you mean, what do we look for? 24, right?
Uh, I thought it was wider than that.
Yeah, I thought as well.
I'm looking at it right now. Which section are you looking at? Um, design standards. Uh, that's seven? Five. Five. Streets.
I mean, this is, the only reason I'm asking is this is, it goes up, it's a dead end, and it's not a through street at all.
Still servicing eight houses, though.
It's, yeah, we'll be servicing 12 if we go to the open space.
Well, yeah. That's the biggest concept funding from us, our opinion, whether we think it's.
Yeah, the 12 will try to.
That's a 50% increase over the eight.
Well, but we have a bonus number that needs to be calculated and agreed upon by the board. So we need to demonstrate on an actual engineer plan, the conventional, and then we come up with a bonus number that the board votes on, and then.
Or not.
And then, yeah, and then we make the determination, and then they get the, the lots, the affordable lots, they get the donation to get the bonus.
Right, but, but under a conventional design, not in open space.
It's half of the conventional, whatever you can get with conventional lots.
But I think the biggest thing you're gonna want to take away from the board is whether it supports the 12 units with an open space around, or the eight as a conventional concept. That's like the biggest concept.
Yeah, no, that is, you know, that's what we're looking for, to see whether it's worth.
We need a different presentation with the calculations and proving to us that the conventional can do the eight lots, right? So then you do the plus four by qualifying with, um, you know, the flexible, the affordable, so you're saying eight is base max number. I don't see, we need an actual plan to determine that, and then, uh.
So, so can I ask you, so the plan itself is just gonna be a basic property plan with just bearings and distances?
Yeah, it's like the one they have right here.
When was, when was this plan designed? What's the date, what's the date on this plan, was this?
Well, this, it's just a, it's a conceptual plan that was kicked out, I don't know, about a year ago, and we just haven't done anything with it, you know?
This hasn't been like approved.
It, it hasn't gone before.
No, this is all new, this is all brand new.
All brand new?
It's all brand new.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing up a few of that.
That's why, you know, that's what we did, we drew the convention, we just don't have the numbers on there.
South West Main.
Yeah, but we're, is it, you got, um, you got Churchill grounds on here, where is, where is this road?
This isn't where the guy has his trucks and tractors in there, it's not that far, is it?
That's right on the side.
Yeah, one of the, I think on one side, there's a guy that's got a couple of trucks or something.
Miss Churchill?
I think so.
It's on the right side, coming from town, uh, quarter mile up, not far at all.
Reference to the other two streets there was just that, that they were built with the forty-foot right-of-ways about the same time that this parcel was cut out the way it is. So, it was just trying to give you some, something.
This is a brand-new subdivision, this is not, not something that was pre-existing.
Yeah, it's all, there's an open lot, twenty-four.
I guess I am, you're trying to get your input, that's.
And access is off of where, southwest main?
Southwest. Southwest main, yep.
Okay.
I'm still looking for the.
If this, if this is, if this is bland, if this is a brand-new.
Is that in zoning?
Subdivision.
I don't know why it would be zoning.
He's just coming, just asking a few questions before they go further.
Okay, cause, all right, so the biggest concern is that should he go for, he's only has, he only has a forty-foot right-of-way end, that's right?
Yeah.
Right, because that's the way it was made.
And that's at the beginning, and you can access fifty feet or whatever.
Once we get inside, we can go sixty feet.
How, how far, how far in do you have to go?
Just past the front two houses.
We need to have all that.
Another page, right there.
Into the lot that you have to go, forty feet.
We can have it up here, please.
Once you get past those front two houses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have the first two houses, yeah.
After he gets past the forty, it's probably six, seven hundred feet.
Well, whatever depth those houses are.
Well, he's saying it's roughly two hundred foot frontages on these.
Yeah, on the, on the conventional, yeah.
The depth of the forty.
On the reduced one, it's a hundred foot.
Maybe three hundred seventy-one feet possibly.
Yes.
It's probably.
A portion. And you don't have over a thousand-foot roadway, right?
No.
Well, no, you can't, yeah, this is.
Oh, total?
Yeah, total.
What's your total length?
We just can't.
I don't, I don't think I've got that, it's, it's under the minute, it's under your requirements, I'm not.
It's a thousand.
I don't wanna say.
It'll be a thousand.
It'll be.
Two hundred feet of frontage?
Two, four, six, it'll be close.
Yeah.
Plus another three fifty or something, yeah.
I mean, real close.
Listen, so that's a waiver, that would be a waiver anyway, right?
Yeah, the forty-foot would be a waiver. Which I, I don't, I don't see where that would be much of a problem.
No.
But anything else after, if you wanna start talking designing drainage and all that stuff, it's gonna have to be what? I mean, just a swivel on the side of the road to a detention point is not gonna cut it, you're gonna have to get it engineered so that you know what the storm water management calculations are, and it has to be designed by them.
I'm working with an engineer, trust me, it'll be fully.
But he's just trying to determine between, or here, eight or twelve?
I think we're, well, first of all, we can't determine that tonight because we don't have the right information.
No, but they're both in front of us, right?
Go with the basic number.
Right.
Well, yeah, the question that I have for you is, is this feasible? Should we waste time trying this?
Single-family house, one house.
Or just, what's that?
Single-family house, one house.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think you have a consensus of the board that there's the, the one hurdle, and then I think you need to do some more work on. We can't tell you, it's at your risk to move forward. I think there's a consensus by the board that it's reasonable to do the forty-foot and then do the sixty once you can. I think that the burming, I don't think that you're.
Yeah, I'm not looking for you to make a commitment, I'm just trying to say, you know, if everybody's sitting here going, no way.
No, but it's your takeaway.
Well, you're, yeah, that's just, yeah, you can see by consensus.
Yeah.
You can see how. You could go listen again, whoever you find can listen to what we're saying.
I, I, yeah, I don't think the board is objecting to the, it's the fact that it's forty feet starting out.
Right.
You can get the, whatever it's required. But I'd be willing to go that far, but anything else after that, he's gonna have to get the engineering and the plans into us. We can't make a decision on anything now.
So it's plausible.
He's just, I'm not, I'm really not asking for decisions, I'm just asking, is this feasible?
How we feel?
Would you, how we, how do you feel about this? Do you feel like, if all, everybody's sitting here saying, no, I don't know, I'm wasting my time?
I'll say my feeling.
Yep.
I have no problems with the eight, but I would with the twelve.
Same here.
And not duplexes, single-family type stuff. Because you, you started having twelve going through that little narrow road area and stuff like that, I think you gotta create more problems than you wanna deal with, but if you have eight, it's more manageable.
But if I may, we don't need to, the width of the roadway is not gonna be different than any other subdivision, so you're saying that's.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
The paved width at the sidewalk.
I should rephrase that.
Okay.
With the traffic going between the two pre-existing homes.
Okay.
Type deal, where you already have houses there, the traffic between twelve and eight going by those houses that, at present have none, would be a substantial increase over just doing eight compared to twelve, that these pre-existing neighbors would have to deal with. That's why I look at the fewer the numbers there, the, the better off, I think, it might be perceived, especially with your neighbors. Cause you, I mean, they are your neighbors.
And also maintaining vegetated buffers or plantings, if we're giving away all the trees, all the sidewalk.
Right, where we're allowing the neighbors. Yeah, where we're allowing you to get away with a few things.
That's what I'd be looking for, cause we're only running town water and the drainage.
Right.
Right, through the forty-foot.
Yeah, you don't have town sewer there, just water, so.
Right, I don't know if any of that's agrofore, he'll, he'd have to have two acre lots, no matter what, for septic systems.
I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know if it is or not.
Yeah, you have to look and see if it's in the agrofore too, cause that, that has a substantial change in, in what you can do there.
Yeah, but if you, if you're trying not to spend a lot more money on engineering, you chose to come to the board with a convention plan, which is a lot less money to engineer, then a twelve, also a twelve, and be rejected per se on the twelve, but there's bonuses.
Oh, it's, it's.
Right, and you could go there, or you could just present the eight and save some engineering money. Just.
I think, I think the most we can.
But we cannot.
I think you know the flavor of the board.
Most we can do is say, yeah, we don't mind the forty-foot right-of-way, we can live with that, after that, you're, you're on your own. Show us, show us some plans.
Yeah, did you have something, Mike?
No, I'm just scratching my head.
Oh.
I was gonna tell you.
We do a lot of that here.
Three hundred and seventy-one feet.
Oh, thank you.
From southwest to where.
Yeah, it was on the.
Yeah, I didn't have to pack it.
Well, I, I.
Wanna say anything else?
So, I appreciate your time.
We like it, we like it, it's good.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be pushing that thousand-foot mark by the time you get out here.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like the electronic copy?
Yes.
Okay, I believe Maria sent that to me, and, cause I've, I've looked at it.
I just need a.
I'd rather see the actual plan than.
Yeah, just, yeah, we just have a little PowerPoint slide.
This is like, like this, I figured it was a little subdivision, none of us did the land back in seventy-four.
Okay.
Ninety thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is it morning star?
Yeah, morning, see you.
Which is almost like everything in that neighborhood area.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Yeah, okay.
Good luck.
Well, thanks for your time.
I appreciate it.
Glad to hear from you, good luck.
Yeah.
Ian, how are we working on getting on the electronic?
Let me get the.
So, yep, I actually can't get access to share, like, I, I saw the link that you sent me, and I saw that he had sent that to me back in April as well. I can't register because I'm already have access to another SharePoint. But I will play around.
I had a little trouble also, and then they had to just do some adjusting on their end to allow my email address.
Okay.
So, I would just send a note to Matt and have him try to add your email address. That doesn't seem correct, that.
That you only have access to one SharePoint?
Yeah, because I'm gonna have two as it is also.
Okay.
And then also for the public to get the documentation for all of our current projects.
That, yeah, for the website, I have access to the website now, I will work on, over the weekend, over the long weekend, to start to, one, figure out how the website works and how to edit things, because, you know, I, I know how to work some websites, I, I don't know the platform for this one, so I'll figure that out, and then I have the zoning bylaw that has been reviewed through December twenty twenty, or the late, last time that it was updated, I'm going to be turning that into a clickable PDF, so you can click on the index and go right to the thing, if that, hopefully that will be too, so that's what I'm gonna be doing over the long weekend, I'll be working on that.
Okay. Mark Allen?
Mark Allen.
Okay.
Okay.
Mark?
He's on mute.
Okay.
You know what it is, he's logged in and then ran here, he didn't log out.
Okay.
That's what it was, he had to bring the plans.
All right, and then as far as White and Reservoir Estates, do we have an update?
We don't have an update, um, I don't know if I said this last, I don't know if I said this last time or not, but the engineer who had been working on.
Jude?
Jude.
Yeah, Jude.
Oh, sorry, nevermind, that's Armstrong, the Williams estate, I have an update for that one, I don't have an update for White and Reservoir Estates.
Okay, so should we send Ken a what?
To the chair, just rejoining the board?
Yeah.
Plus Stevens?
Should we send Ken a note that we had the stipulation of releasing those lots for an update all the time at every meeting?
Which?
So, the Whitemans.
Whitemansville.
Yeah, White and Reservoir Estates.
Okay.
We, um.
I know you, you emailed them. Yeah, emailed them about the.
They should be all over this, I can't understand.
No, I, I did email Ken, I, I think I blind copied the board on that regarding Whitemansville State.
What, Mike?
I think, I think, I think it was.
Don't even say anything, don't.
I'm not, I know where you're. It was a five, it was a five-two vote.
Yeah.
I get, I get it, no, and I did, I did also at our, after our last planning board meeting, I did see Mr. Frazier, and said, you know, we were expecting the developer to come to our next board meeting to give us an update, he wasn't at our, you know, board meeting, so I expressed that to him so he could pass it on to the developer.
But we, there's lots of time passing, and we just did it as a courtesy for them, and we.
Not all of us did.
And we need something in writing from them.
Okay.
Or else we'll.
Cease to desist.
Well, we can do what we can within our power, cause if he issued the foundation permits, he would have to revoke them.
Right.
He, temporary, yes, the temporary.
Yeah.
The.
Well, there's no temporary foundation, I think, is there?
I'm gonna say it again, this is why we've had trouble with this since day one, that's why some of us voted not to release, because I saw this coming, where they just kinda talk a lot, but there's no action. And this is the second meeting now, where nobody's even bothered to respond or do anything whatsoever that the board had requested.
Yeah, so it's been since four twenty-two, I believe.
Are they still working?
That we allowed them to have the foundation permits.
Okay.
So, four, five months, over a month.
Well over.
Well over a month.
Are they actually working up there on those?
I would give them, say, three business days to get something to us.
Okay.
Or we'll request Ken to, to cease and desist.
Okay.
That, I will say, it is a long weekend coming up, maybe till.
Business days.
Huh?
Business days.
Business days.
Well, till the end of next week.
Okay.
Just say that, cause.
Four.
Four business, well, tomorrow.
Monday's a holiday.
All right, five, five business days?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um.
Till Friday.
I'll send that to Mr. Frazier after this meeting.
And Ian needs to get a copy of that.
Can you see me on that?
Yes, you can.
I'll be on. And I'll send Mr. Frazier a note regarding Davis Street about the binder, just a decision that we made on our.
Yes.
Disappointing.
Sorry about that, I didn't send that out to him earlier.
Okay, all right, and stone slope stabilization, update?
We don't have an update on that, this is the one where, I don't know if I've said this last time, um, oh, Mark Allen.
Mark Allen's online.
Oh.
Back again?
I just couldn't resist coming back to this.
What, what are you here for?
Uh, the stone slope, uh.
Stone slope, wow, perfect timing.
Did you submit a plan of the approved, previously approved versus what they would like to do?
Uh, what we had submitted back in January to Mr. Cundev was a plan of what we wanted to do, we hadn't, I mean, the town has what was previously approved. I'm just here to basically pick up the pieces, because so many people have come and gone since the project started. So, I don't know, the board is up to speed with what has transpired, but I can kinda get you up to speed as far as I am.
So, what the board is looking for so that we can make a determination is the previously approved slopes and material versus what you're wishing to do minor modification of, I guess.
I see, okay, so that gives me a good, a starting point, so what was previously approved, again, a lot of moving people in this project, Gary Aaron Hellman had proposed a, like a twelve-foot tall retaining wall at that back property line, and during construction, it seemed more feasible to our client to do a one-to-one riprap slope. So, that was never asked for, I guess, back during the process of when the subdivision started. So, there really isn't a slope-to-slope comparison, it's more of a retaining wall-to-slope comparison. And basically, where we were back in January, Eric Bezette from my office, who has since retired last month, sent a letter to Bill Cundev stating, and again, Bill was, Bill was okay with the change, as long as he got a letter from an engineer stating that the riprap slope was in compliance with normal engineering practice, so that's what we did in January to suffice Bill Cundev's request, and then even upon, in addition to that, we've taken away two-thirds of that stone slope to be just a regular low-in-seed slope and just keep a third of it as the existing stone, as it, as it is around the corner of the property.
So, um, just to catch up to speed, I do recall that they wanted to change one of the units to a walkout, and they were gonna basically change the slope and, and increase the, the ratio on the slope. The other problem was, was that the riprap that they were using was all-around stones, and it wasn't the lock. Look at the correct riprock material.
Jagger.
Jagger.
So, I think, I think this, I think the walkout condition was in both applications with the, with the wall and as well as with the slope, and I'll revisit that.
Yep.
But the walkout condition makes complete sense on this particular project, just because of the difference in elevation from the streets to the rear block line.
But they were changing.
Again, another eight feet of fill and compact, it would be, I think, even, even worse, and then put a retaining wall on.
But they, they were changing the pitch, though, they were changing the, the slope to, it was gonna be pretty.
One-to-one.
Yeah, it was almost like a one-to-one, it was, it was almost, I mean, a complete drop-off cliff.
Yeah, so, so the stone slope that we put in during construction.
You remember that, right?
Uh, was at about a one-to-one slope, and that, that stone has been there for over two and a half years now. So, what, what the applicant, Keith Armstrong, had asked Bill for was, you know, what, what should I do to make this change? And Bill said, basically, I need an engineer, your engineer, to certify that that slope is gonna be stable enough for the, for that, you know, height and, and distance, so Gary Aaron Hellman was since replaced, we took over the project, and we did the evaluation of the slope, and we said, we can remove two-thirds of that stone and put, you know, low-in-seed in and it raised it up naturally, but just a small third of that existing stone should remain at that corner.
So, we're still looking for a plan, with the plan change, and then you were very close to the neighboring property line, so that's what another concern was.
Yep.
So, the plans are changing from what was approved.
Correct, that, that was the request, yes.
So, we need a plan.
We never, we never saw the deltas.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, so, you had the delta with the approved plans probably compiled, and then we gave you a plan of the provision in January, so.
We saw one.
You want, I could compile the whole.
No, it, it wasn't correctly overlaid with the different color changes on it, so from a red to a black.
Right.
It wasn't, that's what we asked them to update.
From January.
Right.
From January, so what, what was submitted in January wasn't correctly showing the overlaps of those, so I would, you can look at the tape from January, the recorded minutes on there, it's available on YouTube.
March, April.
And so we.
Asking the same exact thing over and over.
And, and we did ask, you know, every meeting that's been on the agenda regarding status, and we've always had a concern regarding the riprap material being there, so I would, I'll look at the last meeting when you guys were present, we did cover all these items, that would help get you up to speed.
Right.
Yeah, no, and again, I apologize, Eric Bezette from our office, he retired back at the end of May, so.
Lucky him.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're for removing the, the riprap, the two-thirds of riprap, I think we're for that.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a no.
Yeah, and stabilizing, yeah, so we just need to see the plan for the record.
It's like an overlay plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, sure.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Thank you, have a good night.
See ya.
Good night.
We have no meeting minutes?
No.
Why are they making out on that, weren't they looking for somebody to discuss?
They hired someone.
I complained about this last time, you know, they're supposed to be in the packet, right?
Yes.
I did.
She hadn't received any, that's.
She, she didn't receive any meeting minutes, um, she did up, did send an email.
Why are they on here?
No, those are the ones we're waiting to receive. She took off the January and the February that was approved.
Yes, I know that. Is there a guidance on how long they have?
There is, yeah.
Are we meeting that guideline?
Yeah, I think COVID, we're still on state of emergency.
Okay, but that's, that's ending here real soon, right?
Yeah, June fifteenth.
Yeah, just talking about lifting all the.
Restrictions?
Restrictions.
Yeah, legal, yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, there's legislation that is proposed.
And one other question, anybody here what came out of, remember, we requested the money to be returned last week? Anybody hear anything about that?
We have.
We didn't get a voucher to sign anything.
We're waiting on the voucher.
For Stenza.
Yeah.
Yes, um, that, yeah, we're working on that, or I say.
A little complicated.
Yeah, Maria's working on that, because it had gone to the general fund, so it's just requesting the voucher to take it out of the general fund and be reimbursed, um, the building department had, has done that in the past, Maria thought that that couldn't be done, but, you know, so we're, we're working with that and the treasurer.
I think the administrative fees got put into the general fund already.
That usually just gets put in there, I believe.
I don't know.
By the way.
And I could be speaking out of turn, I could be misinterpreting what she had said.
It goes right in.
All right, can we be updated and posted on that?
Usually takes two to three meetings, for, in the past, when we did issue a refund.
No, I just wanted to stay up on that.
Hundred percent. That's, that's gonna be on Jean to approve that, and she's very meticulous about.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have to be.
I, I mean. I'm sure the way you're done, it'll just take a while.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, so I'll make sure, I'll keep up to date with that with Maria, and then Jean, she the treasurer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'll talk with her next week and see what, what's going on with that, what the process is, if there's anything else that need, that she needs from the board.
Okay.
Just make sure that's going along.
No, thank you.
Um, this earth-removable special permit, we're not gonna be able to sign this, because, um, we need to add in a couple things and change it around, so we'll just come in, just let us know for McIntyre.
Yeah.
Cause we just have like this piece of paper, so you gotta put the start date in and all that, just.
Okay.
So revise it, and then just send out an email for us.
Yep.
Well.
Okay, that wasn't in the sign folder, was it?
No, but he thought maybe we could sign it and then he would.
Yeah, no, we have, you have to, yeah, revision's done.
Yeah, uh, anything else, Paul?
Bylaws, amendments and stuff like that, so, uh, working with Ian and sending us off, so this is just a compiled, some of the items we dealt with. So, the first one was, so the first one is, is just tying into Mass General Law with the forty-eight, section five regarding adopting a zoning, 48, section five regarding adopting of zoning, adding that back in to, so that's the first one there. The second one is, is related to the accessory apartments, the time limit on accessory apartments because of the three-year, but what they had in here, which was great, just removing the strikeout section, they still have in here saying about if the dwellings sold, we're no longer being used, you know, in its purpose, then it should revert back to a single-family home for that, for that purpose there. And then the next item, which is 4.3 regarding, this is the lot front exemption, so when we had to deal with the one in casual court, remember the setback with the 50 feet and the 200 feet? So those were some of the, the changes in there. And, and removing the date, they have an adoption date of the common owner, we've dealt with this where, you know, that, that's been a trigger point to deal with.
Sure.
And then.
Why do we want to remove that date?
Because I think Jay did clarify us on that.
Correct.
So as far as like having common ownership as far as merger theory goes, so he applied the same thing and it really, you have a case that you could just establish that it was arms length.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that May 15, 2005 date is.
Correct.
The bylaw?
Yeah.
Bylaw was inactive.
When the bylaw was inactive.
I'm not really sure what that date even serves for.
Quite before us.
It's kind of like you got bonus points if you had the land for 15 years.
No, I'm gonna back up, so why are we admitting the renewal for the three years?
For the accessory apartment?
Yeah.
It was, it was just a discussion point that we're always dealing with either applicants being not, not informed, missing their dates, being penalized for that, I mean, again, this all has to.
Policing the permit.
Yeah.
So there's no other trigger except for pretty much a sale of a property. And then that, in that case, it's on the record and we have to figure out that the property sold, it could be three years.
Yeah, and, and other towns, other towns do not, again, researched this already, other towns with accessory apartments do not have a time limit.
What towns?
It's because it's special permit.
Sutton doesn't have one. What, what other requires special permits retirement, we talked about time limits, there's no time limits on.
I don't think any of the surrounding towns.
Yeah, Ian, none of the surrounding towns.
Can I just say something, please? So the method that we grant these is through a special permit, so once you exercise your special permit and you continue with that special, that something that was issued, then you shouldn't really need to come back and renew it because it's already inactive, it's on your prop, it's on your record.
Person changes that lives there, all that kind of stuff.
There's a trigger, so it's on their record, same as any other special permit.
Yeah, so how we, you're not gonna know who changed or who's living there.
Well, if, if, again, if the property's sold, then it automatically distinguishes, it, it's.
That's weird, don't go there, let's go, go back a step.
Yeah, what's gonna happen, somebody moves out, you can come move in, you can come move in now, we don't know who did.
Right, there's no, right now, every three years, at least we know who's living in the place.
Well, we really don't because they can just say they're.
I understand.
They could, but they're also.
I understand that a few got biased and, and that weren't sent renewals, but that's because the staff is at zero.
Right, I mean, that, that's nothing to.
I think it's a good system of checks and balances myself.
So we need, then we need to have someone watching it.
Right.
And, and probably it should be maybe the building department because he wouldn't be enforcing it, yeah.
I don't care who watches it, but there should be somebody, there should be somebody watching it, no matter.
It's no different than any other license, I mean, most licenses are only good for a couple of years and that's it, period.
Yeah, well, it's a special permit, it doesn't expire if you continue.
It doesn't, but the occupants could be different in it, so it's changed.
Is it by perjury, when they, when they put the occupants in, just to, you know, follow up on you, Jay, is it by perjury that they say, I attest, it's certain.
Yeah.
Well, that's as good as it gets, I mean, I just don't think somebody, well, they would, but I don't think people generally are gonna do that.
I mean.
It's a good check of balance too, I do.
Yeah.
I think if somebody has an apartment.
It isn't like we're asking for every year.
If we rent somebody a accessory apartment and their, their in-laws are living there and the in-laws, for whatever reason, pass.
They have their money in the paper.
Move out on someplace else, we should know that.
Right.
Otherwise whoever's owners of the house could say, cousin hit, come on in, you can have the apartment now.
Or friend, or friend, or anybody, right.
I think, I think there should be a system of checks and balances, I think a three-year renewal is not a problem.
Do you think we should do it with the building department instead?
Well, that, but I mean, if not, I could maybe understand, okay, let's not go three, maybe go four years, if you want to maybe add one year, but to eliminate this, no, I don't, no. If you have an accessory apartment, if you can't bother to check in every three or four years, then there's a problem.
We gotta check in with the.
When the person moves out, let's just say it's supposed to revert back, so the building inspector is supposed to go there and make sure that it's turned into a single-family home again.
I haven't gone that far, I'm just talking about the three-year check.
No, so maybe we give it to the building department to send out the notices.
Oh, yeah, for notification of the three or four years coming up, yes. No different than hosting licenses or anything else, you get notified when those licenses are coming up.
When people are refiling a full application.
All right, to back up, that's not our fault, okay, so you don't go blaming on that aspect.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying.
But the idea is, is we have to be able to maintain certain things, whether there's the staff or not, if there's no staff, then it's up to the administration to figure it all out.
I, I, I hear your point regarding someone moving in.
We, let's do subsequent four years and I think we should add some sort of the checks and balances system in there saying that it's the zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enforcement officer, okay.
That will be.
I don't care who checks it, as long as somebody's checking it.
Right.
Well, they're supposed to check it, right? So I say if you, if you were.
I'm not sure who sent out the reminder notice.
Maria used to do it.
If it was Maria or it was Bill or our department.
I think it's almost easier if the building does because the building department has to inspect it, if they, if somebody reports the person for having someone different or if they move out and it's supposed to revert back to a single-family house, the building inspector is supposed to go there.
That's fine.
Double check it.
Yeah.
Ask the inspector that.
No, 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 no.
Somebody has to take care of it, I don't care who.
No, no, but to Ernie, to Ernie's point, to Ernie's point and Tracy's point, I, I agree, because what happens is the bill and inspector sends a letter to Aaron because he missed his deadline, is now it's, you get a letter saying you're gonna get fined, you know, you better remove the apartment, you know, blah, 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 we've had applicants come before, so.
Correct, the last one, yeah.
Correct.
So regarding the enforcement and renewal and all that other stuff and notification, so let's put it underneath the zoning enforcement officer and, and we do the four years?
I think that's the easiest.